Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Ayaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
We adjourn at 7:11 PM.
Good evening. The December 10, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phone on silent mode for this meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Ayaplo.
Here.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Present.
Ms. Marchaza.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Thank you, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to our Constitution, one nation, in the land of liberty and justice for all.
... to the December 10, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website, and the agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only, and the second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it be an item on the agenda or another topic. To participate in the Hearing of the Public section, interested speakers must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Signups are available online through the school district's website or onsite prior to the start of the meeting. You will be called to the microphone when it is your turn to speak. At that time, we ask that you please state your name and address questions to the board president. Each person may speak only once per segment, and comments are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the Hearing of the Public is for our community members to address the board. The board continues to welcome feedback from the community as an important component to conducting business. This is an information gathering opportunity for the board and administration so we can work to best serve the community. If at the end of the public participation we do not make a statement, please know this does not demonstrate a lack of care for comments shared by our community; rather, we want to be thoughtful in our approach, and we will provide a response in a timely manner when appropriate. In an effort to maintain an orderly meeting based on Ohio Revised Code 2917.12 and Board Policy 0169.1, any person doing any act which obstructs or interferes with the conduct or orderly progress of the board meeting will be warned and/or removed from the meeting. This meeting is being shown live and can be viewed on demand on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Thank you. And at this time, we have our district highlights and recognition.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade. At this time, I would like to recognize our Mentor High School Boys Cross Country Team. The 2024 Boys Cross Country Team had a very successful season. Once again, they finished the year as Greater Cleveland Conference Champions, District Runner-Up, third place at Regionals, and 16th place at the State Meet. This was their 10th trip to the State Meet since 2006. Several of the members of the team had great individual successes. Billy Dennison earned All Regional Honors and News Herald Runner of the Year. Matthew Pankowski earned All Regional All Ohio and First Team News Herald Honors. Billy Dennison, Matthew Pankowski, Ryan Olver, Arete Lawson, Gabe Tolleson were named to the Academic All Ohio Team. Matthew Pankowski was the third-best time in school history, and Billy Dennison has the best time in school history and qualified to the State Meet all four years of his career. At this time, I would like to introduce them to you, starting with head coach Bill Dennison. Sean Castiglione. Billy Dennison. Arete Lawson. Michael Maynard. Brian McNana. Ryan Olver. Matthew Pankowski. And Gabe Tolleson. Congratulations to our 2024 Mentor High School Boys Cross Country Team.
At this time, we'll take a short break to allow for anyone who would like to leave to exit, but you're welcome to stay. All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I have something. I had mentioned it to Mr. Wade, and he had -- I had a different understanding of the minutes, and so he just recommended, rather than changing it, bringing it up here to confirm. The minutes reflect that Mrs. Jesslyn, Mrs. Cook, and Mrs. Marchaza were open to a policy to align with House Bill 104 if Neola and Legal gave us the okay. I left the meeting with only -- the understanding that only Mrs. Jesslyn had felt that way, so I just wanted to confirm that for the minutes.
I don't recall exactly saying that I would jump on board. I, you know, I think my statement was that I'd prefer to wait. I remember saying I like to wait, and that's still consistent with what I feel today.
Wait till.
We need to learn more. We haven't heard from Neola yet. They are our trusted source for policy writing, and there's just a little more that we need to learn first, so.
Mrs. Marchaza, do you feel that the minutes are inaccurate as written?
Let's see. Let me take a look at them again. It's been a little while since I looked at them last.
I felt that the minutes were an accurate reflection of what I stated, so I don't have a problem with them.
Yeah, I mean, I read them. I didn't see any issue with them myself.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, I agree, Rose. That's kind of what I took away from it, too. I know Mrs. Cook did mention that, you know, it kind of depended on -- at first, you were like, yeah, I think I could support it, but then I think the question was, what if one, like, if Neola says yes, or do you need it from both of the attorneys? We got into kind of some of that back and forth, so I recalled it the same way as Rose, so I'm glad we can get some clarification.
But overall, we were open to learning more information and not closing out that idea at all, but just being open to reviewing policy and, you know, finding out the information as it comes to us.
Which I think we have Senate Bill 104 discussion on later for the agenda anyways.
And we also, I think everybody agreed unanimously that we would follow the law, whatever that is.
Absolutely.
No question.
Without any question.
Yeah, I think we'll have more discussion about what that looks like later.
I also have one more thing before we -- concerning -- before we approve the minutes. During the public comment portion of the meeting last month, a speaker who happens to be a PTA board member for one of our elementary schools engaged in religious bigotry directed toward Mrs. Payne and I, and frankly, any Christian. As part of her religious attack on our deeply-held beliefs, the speaker inferred that Christians or people who wear crosses around their necks don't care about our LGBTQ students. These comments couldn't be further from the truth, and it's saddening that there might be students who heard these comments and might believe them to be true. Personal attacks come with the job. However, when the comments attack sincerely-held religious beliefs, I think this board should show the community that we will not tolerate this level of hate. The silence from this board after she spoke -- The silence after -- from this board after she spoke was deafening. Not one of you attempted to condemn her remarks during the meeting. Further, no one attempted to reach out to Mrs. Payne or myself to show support or to condemn the remarks. A video of the speech went viral, and I believe last I saw had over a million viewers. And after that meeting, many people asked me why a statement wasn't made after seeing that and why the district didn't denounce those comments. The silence suggested tacit approval of such behavior, which then further emboldened this individual to take it one step further and try to exploit their PTA position by attempting to block a parent from volunteering at their child's school event for the unsubstantiated crime of associating with people critical of her comments. You can imagine how this parent must have felt to receive an email from the vice president of her school's PTA demanding she remove herself from volunteering at the upcoming event. While Mr. Heath did respond to the parent, reassuring them that they most certainly could still volunteer, it's reasonable to assume that this parent might not feel comfortable volunteering in the future. How do we know that more Christian families don't feel intimidated after an incident like this happens and zero response comes from the district? While I fully respect and support the right to free speech, employees of the district, as well as members of a district's support organization like the PTA, are held to a higher standard. Despite reaching out to the Ohio PTA multiple times, I did not receive a response, and no attempts have been made to reassure parents that this behavior goes against the values held by the district and PTA. Failing to condemn such behavior risks the district appearing to endorse it. In recent years, there's been growing concern that the district's stance toward people of faith has been less than favorable, as reflected in decisions made by this board. Issues like retaining sexually explicit and Asian-appropriate books, along with the disregard for privacy rights of female students, have raised alarms. Given the district's current financial challenges, now may be the time to reassess our approach in order to better reflect the values of the majority. Many in the community feel the district is not upholding the principles that are essential to providing a well-rounded education, and it is essential that we address these concerns to regain trust and ensure we are serving the needs of all of our students and families. So I would just like to ask if anybody has anything to say about those -- what happened last week or last month.
I do. And this is actually a little bit broader even than that particular set of comments. It's been a pattern that has deepened over the last few years, and it's been very frustrating. Our district has intentionally sought to cultivate kindness among our students, particularly over the last 15 years. Recently, some individuals have engaged in a coordinated campaign of intolerance on whatever place along the continuum they may be, with unfounded accusations leveled at anyone with whom they disagree. What saddens me is that here we are, a quarter of the way through the 21st century, and this spirit of meanness continues to rear its ugly head, and much of it's coming from people who don't even live in our community. I believe that our students and staff and colleagues deserve much better than this. I'm so grateful for the hard work of Mentor Public Schools' teachers, who do their best to offer high-quality instruction so that students can achieve their best. I also appreciate the staff's dedication and volunteers who support the well-being of young people. They make an important difference every day.
I have a couple comments because I understand that you felt that you were being attacked. I've been in that position, too. And the silence isn't that I support the comment. The silence is because we were told that it's freedom of speech, and we really can't regulate that. So I'm sorry that you didn't feel supported by silence. I know, I have been attacked, and you haven't said anything, nor has Mrs. Payne, nor has Mrs. Jesslyn, nor has -- you know, it's kind of something that happens, unfortunately, in this climate. I can speak to the parent who had volunteered, because we did, you know, as you stated, had a parent volunteer, and the co-president did ask them to step down. And I also responded to that parent that had volunteered, the volunteering parent, apologizing to them, hoping that they would continue -- telling them that I hope they would continue to volunteer. And then I did speak with Mr. Heath about it, and as you know, he spoke with both parties. In addition, I was contacted by the PTA, the Lake County Council of PTA, Ohio PTA, that contacted me because they received a letter from Mrs. Payne and then a separate letter from you with concerns about this individual and wanting to silence their ability to speak out at the meeting. Well, I did get a response back, and it was my understanding that you received it, too. And some of their comments after they reviewed the meeting, this advisor writes from the PTA writes, "I watched the meeting in question. The person introduced herself as a parent in the district and at no time mentioned her affiliation with PTA. This is no different than Mrs. Payne's email signature with her affiliation of the Ohio School Board Constitutional Coalition. There appears to be no restraints for having an affiliation with an organization that is not acknowledged by your school district. I hope we don't expect our parent volunteers to be held to a higher level of expectation than the board members. Ohio PTA has received correspondence from other units in the past where some members have experienced intimidation to be silenced by board members, and while we would always want our members to be respectful, they still have a voice and should not be intimidated because of a position they hold as a volunteer to help the schools and students. Our PTA encourages units to stay focused on our mission and am willing to insist or assist where needed to keep the PTA units focused on serving the students in Mentor Schools." So my response to you is that I think it was an overreach with limiting volunteer, and I spoke out about that immediately by responding to the person, as did Mr. Heath, and that was remedied. But I also think it's an overreach for us to go after someone's board position and try to limit their free speech. I do see that as a bit of intimidation. People come up to us all the time. The emails that I've gotten, there have been emails, there have been podcasts, there have been speakers here that are very disparaging. And I see it as a part of the job. You're putting yourself out there, and I'm not going after people in their positions or their jobs to limit their free speech, because I see that as it's their free speech. If that's what they want to say, they can.
I have some comments on this as well. I absolutely did email the PTA. They did not email us back. They only sent you and Mr. Heath their response, to which I then responded again to and included the screenshot of the -- because they weren't aware of the co-president who had tried to cease a PTA volunteer from volunteering for her child, and simply because in her email it said she was friends with people who were basically sharing her own words that she said at the microphone. So I did absolutely contact them, and I wrote them another email, which is pretty lengthy, so I'm not going to read it now. But the PTA actually is different because -- and I had contacted Mr. Heath about this. The PTA has to -- they fall under our policy 9211 as a support organization, so there are additional things that they have to align with for that policy, which is different than like an outside organization. So and my intent of my email was certainly not to censor anyone. Everybody has the right to get to the microphone, as I've been, you know, just as all of us have been slandered, you know, called names, everything, for the last, gosh, three years. That's absolutely their right, and I'm a staunch supporter of that right. But I think when you go and block a parent from volunteering for their child, that's a problem. And also, when you make a statement like that, and we don't say anything, not you, I'm talking about me, I should have said something after that comment was made on behalf of everybody else who has similar beliefs as me. So my email to them was also like, this is really not a good reflection of the PTA, because I know not all PTA members believe the same way, and they do have bylaws that they have to follow as well, to my understanding. So I understand she wasn't speaking on behalf of the PTA, but it still leaves a -- it resonates with the community when there's -- especially when you have a viral clip of what she said going, you know, around the -- with, what was it, over a million views now? So it does impact us, and that's not the first, unfortunately, not the first situation that I've had as a board member. Two years ago, we had given PTA members, PTA presidents, their little thank-you gifts, and I had somebody who I've never spoken with before not shake my hand, go like this to me, and said, uh-uh, not shaking your hand, and I was like, I don't even know this person. So that's two times now in my term where, you know, somebody in a leadership position like that has made some pretty unwise decisions, in my opinion, and hasn't respected my position, which is fine, they can say that the mic -- I have no problem with what she said at the mic. On her own behalf, she can say whatever she wants. Now, I do have something that I probably should have said after she said that I want to speak to that as well. So while all speakers are entitled to their First Amendment rights and freedom of speech, I want to also make a statement in reference to the remarks made at the last board meeting. I echo Rose's sentiments and what she just said. I have faced criticism for my beliefs multiple times in recent years due to my board position. While everyone has their right to their opinion, labeling others as bigots, transphobes, homophobes, using whatever trendy term is popular, only undermines your argument and demonstrates an inability to engage in constructive dialogue. I was chosen for this role by numerous voters who share my values. My actions and my votes aim to reflect their beliefs. I am also called by my faith to speak with grace and with truth. My views on important matters like protecting girls, bathrooms and locker rooms from boys, as well as the need to remove age-inappropriate sexually explicit materials, and inform parents about books discussing sexuality during silent reading time for kindergarten through fifth-grade students, may differ from what others believe. Although my views on these issues don't align with the majority of the board, I still have a duty to represent those who chose me to do that. Despite any efforts to stifle my opinions, I will continue to stand firm in my convictions. You see, my faith holds me accountable to a higher purpose. It was my faith that supported me through challenging times. When I was a student in this very district, I wore a cross around my neck then, and I still wear it today. It continues to be my source of hope and serves as a reminder that when I saw -- as a reminder when I fall short of expectations. I want students, teachers, and parents who wear crosses to know that I stand with you. I champion your right to your religious freedom, whether you are within the school walls or beyond. This month, many will celebrate the birth of Jesus Christ during Christmas. I wish a Merry Christmas to those who celebrate with me and Happy Holidays to everybody else.
Okay. I think since everybody else is taking a moment to speak, I'll go ahead and -- I first start out with a question. Since the speaker in question did not speak on behalf of the PTA, how did you two find out that she was even in the PTA?
I've known that for a while. I don't know how.
Oh, you knew?
She's been someone that's been coming to meetings and very vocal on social media.
Did you look her up or something after the meeting?
No, I didn't.
Oh, so you just knew who she was when she came to the microphone?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And you knew she was in the PTA?
Yes.
Okay. And then you took the extra step of contacting PTA leadership because of the content of her comments, correct?
Because she is part of a district-affiliated organization, and so, yes, I believe that...
But that -- but she wasn't speaking on behalf of that organization, correct?
It doesn't matter. We've also had employees that have violated policy.
I thank you for that answer. So I think for me, you know, she didn't identify herself as a member of the PTA, wasn't speaking on behalf of said organization, so she still does retain the ability to enjoy the same free speech that we've touted up here at this table for ourselves. Even when, you know, we're responding directly to these individuals as they come to the microphone, we've said, oh, you know, we have free speech rights, too. We're going to clap back, you know? So we are able -- we sit in a position of privilege, right, up here? As you said, we do. These are leadership positions. If we are going to demand our First Amendment rights and the ability to invoke them at will, I don't know that it should be any different, regardless of who that person is or what volunteer work he or she does. Now, where I will agree, though, is that we have free speech, sure, but I do believe there's such a thing as reckless speech, and I think that we've indulged in that for far too long. I agree, three years at least. I've been watching reckless speech up at the microphone again and again, but I will also say, as a subject of said reckless speech, that every one of us has been a, you know, a victim of, we could say. I've never seen anybody put their hand up and say, whoa, that crosses the line, you know, to anyone. So that's never been customary for us, and I'm surprised to learn that your expectation is that it should be. So that's a first for me. I'm glad to hear it, and I'll keep that in mind going forward. I would say, too, the same goes for the emails we receive from all sorts of community members that we're all copied on. You know, I've never seen anyone defend anyone in those emails where we are called names I can't even repeat up here. So again, if that's going to be our custom going forward, I do look forward to hearing that from everyone at the table. So what I also want to say is I do agree with President Cook that we signed up for this, right? As candidates, we ran, we knew what we were in for. In some respects, maybe Mrs. Jesslyn didn't, because she's been on the board for a number of years, and we can all agree that things have changed substantially since she joined. But me, I knew what I was getting into. I knew I was ready for that. I continue to get emails and comments, and, you know, it's going to happen. That's part of it. The people who did not sign up for this, I will say, are our teachers and staff. And what I've also noticed, what has also gone viral, is a number of targeted attacks toward members of our teachers and staff, and they did not sign up for this. These are some of the most devoted educators and people I have ever met. I am the product of these, of their work. As an alumna of this institution... the product of these, of their work. As an alumna of this institution, of this public school, I was their student. And they were exemplar models of adults, people for me to look up to. And I think it's important that we, as the leaders of this district, acknowledge that. And make sure that they know we've got their backs, because I do. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like, you know, on the table right now is our motion to approve the minutes. So if we could get back to this, and if we want to continue this discussion in new business, again, you're welcome to bring it up, but let's get back to our agenda. We have a motion on the table, we have a first and a second to approve the minutes. If there's no more discussion specifically related to if the minutes are accurate or not, let's move on. Please call the roll.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Aplo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, next we have hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Our first speaker is Jennifer Alad.
Good evening, board members. So I'm here tonight because I've missed the last couple of meetings. I had a severe injury, but even though I had surgery just a couple of days ago, I figured I couldn't miss this one because there was some opportunities to speak, and I didn't get to have those last time. You know, I got to watch it on YouTube, and that attack was not just for the board members. It was everybody in this community that overwhelmingly voted in your next president. So I'm just saying that on the Christian, a whole Christian level thing, you know, where we were basically called bigots for wearing crosses. I'm wearing a beautiful one tonight. Anyways, the agenda item I want to speak about tonight is the bathroom. And since Neola makes your laws and you don't, I don't know why there's a need to wait. If they're the ones that write your policies, what are we doing? What are we doing here? If you're not the ones that put policies in order to protect children in the schools, I don't know what, I don't, Neola writes the policies and you guys just vote on it? I don't know how this all works. I'll have to get some information on that. But what I'm seeing is, is no protection for the students. You don't care about the students. If you say you care about, oh, I care about the teachers, I care about students. Where? You are letting boys in the girls bathrooms still. We have biological males that have full access to gender neutral bathrooms, and they're using the female bathrooms. It's absolutely, it's absurd. It's preposterous, and it's downright dangerous. Do I even have to get in to the student who has beaten up several girls in not only the cafeteria, but in those bathrooms here in this school? It's, I don't understand why we have to wait. If these instances had, has happened several different times, I mean, wouldn't you think that it would be, you know, important to call Neola, whoever you have to make a phone call to, to say, hey, we have to put a policy in place to get these biological males out of our female bathroom? I don't, I don't understand. And anyways, back to the whole condemning Christians, your community has spoke. And you don't care about what we say. You take it all into consideration, because for years we've been, everybody in this community has been telling you how we feel, and we get ignored. And you wonder why your community members are pissed off. You wonder why they sound off the way they do. Look in the mirror. That's all you gotta do.
Our next speaker is Susan Sednick.
Good evening. I'm Susan Sednick, 7539 Little Mountain Road. I also wear a cross around my neck to remind me of the sacrifice that Jesus made on my behalf and your behalf. I would like to just state a comment, just based off of what you guys were just talking about. I think Rose and Annie have a very valid point in that when you have someone speaking that represents, to some degree, your school system, and there's a million views of her insulting your colleagues and making this district be an embarrassment, that is the time that you should be professional and unify, and you could speak up and defend your colleagues. Doesn't mean you're taking away free speech, and I really don't care if you get a couple of emails or comments, no big deal. You all know that that's different than a million views on something that's gone viral. So don't, I know what you're doing, and it's not working. Be professional. I also want to speak about the bathroom bill. One of the questions I ask myself is, why is it important to have a policy on certain issues? And the definition of a school policy is that there are structures that form and support the mission, vision, and goals of a school district. Making policy open and available supports equity, builds trust between the school and the community, and increases your accountability. Why we would not make policy to address a situation that is obviously very contentious, like men and boys being in the girls bathroom, is beyond me. You don't need Neola to write something. You can look at the situation here in our community, and it's not enough to say we're going to follow the law. We already have parents that have stated directly, they're not going to follow the law. And so if we have this as a concern in the community, we're counting on you guys to say, okay, it is the law. No harm in writing up a policy to make the community feel better. So, we don't know what's going to happen when this is violated. So my suggestion is, to all the female students at all the public schools, every single time you see a man or a boy enter into the restroom, you call the police. You document it, you write it down, and you take a picture. When you're done with that, then maybe call your principal or your teacher, because they're really not first in line to help you. You call the police every single time, or you can walk across the street. That's what I would suggest. If I was in a school here, and there's a guy that came in there, I sure as, I would go across the street, and I would tell the police, and I would make a report. That's what all the girls need to do, because you guys will not protect the students. They need to do it themselves.
Our last speaker is David Kern.
My name is David Kern, and I serve as a pastor here in Mentor. I was actually the one called to start Lifewise in Mentor after attending the conference in Eastlake. Before I start, I'll open with my disclosure of faith, and let everyone know that the Lord Jesus Christ dearly loves you. This is a natural love, and He guides us to the beauty of His natural order. He will be victorious despite the efforts of the few to hold back His power and His divine movement in this community. I attended the meeting last month, which addressed policy regarding gender correct bathrooms, and parents' rights for their children to attend biblical education during school hours. I was alarmed at the board members' lack of action in making concessions in the face of sure defeat as related to state law and the movement of God in our midst. Jesus says, protection of natural principles and values of the children are to be taken reverently, or the one who refuses such submission to the stewardship will have to answer in that day we all face, and that is death. And He even goes to the extent and said that would be better for that person to have a millstone tied around their neck and be thrown in the depths of the sea. There was an argument directed at two board members who were accused of holding the levy hostage. As a biblical pastor, and the voice of many in our community, we will use God's grace, we will use His power that He has given us, to fail any levy Mentor attempts to pass and support our children toward alternative education opportunities. Unless we see change in the structure of this board, every levy you attempt to pass will face heavy resistance from within the power structure of the Lord's church, and the student body numbers will continue to diminish. I once stood against God. I was raised in poverty, abuse, and family discord, and it's because of this cross I stand here today. Schools did not help my circumstances. My only fix would have had supportive people around me, and this is what Lifewise was here to support. My anger from these unfortunate events caused me to stand firmly against God until He revealed His love to me as I faced the reality of my condition. Those that love for God, and all of you, I stand here today and plead with you on Christ's behalf, be reconciled to God. Those standing against this holy movement of God in this nation and this community will only be pushed aside. The Bible says, and we learned from the last meeting, that anyone who sets themselves up against the cross will be made a public spectacle. So I urge you to make policies, to put them in order, or levies will fail. Merry Christmas, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next, we have the superintendent's report and recommendations.
I just have one quick update here for everyone this evening before we get into the consent agenda. I've been working very closely with Chief Gunch and Mr. Filippiak on the final language adjustments for the SSO contract, and feel we are in a very good place to get this rolling in January. I know we have several individuals who are interested in these roles, so we are looking forward to getting these positions filled as soon as possible for second semester. Had some final conversations with Chief Gunch yesterday through email, just checking on some of the final language, and I think we are very, very close to being able to bring that to the board for approval. Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda, and recommend approval of items 6A1 through 6A3.
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Who motioned?
I didn't hear the motion. That's why I was confused when you said...
I think you're the motion then.
Oh, I'm...
So Ms. Jessling's the motion.
I will second.
Take the roll.
Yes, please.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Aplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Infinite Campus End-user License Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Aplo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel, and C2 through C5 are related to human resource matters.
I would like to move C5, I believe it is, the employee separation agreement and release to a separate line item, which I believe doesn't require a vote to do that. So could we vote just on C1 through C4?
Do we need to amend the agenda, Mr. Wade, or can I pull that off separate?
We can pull it off separate, vote on it separately.
Okay, so let me amend what I am going to recommend right now then. So I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel, and C2 through C4 are related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Aplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion C1 through C4 carry five oh.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C5.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a discussion. I just wanted to see, I have a couple of questions first, and I know, Mr. Heath, I did call you earlier. So I was hoping we can kind of go over some of that, as to justifying the vote tonight for me. The separation agreement is in reference to a bus operator who was discovered to be texting, scrolling on social media, and talking on her cellphone while driving the bus with students in it on multiple occasions. Is that stated correctly?
Yes.
Okay, and we have documented proof of that?
Yes.
Okay. So based on that, I can't support a separation agreement personally.
I have a couple of things. I also have an issue with this. I understand that it's common practice to avoid litigation to use these separation agreements, but I believe that in, right now, I think that we should adopt a zero tolerance policy when it comes to employees putting our students at risk. And so, for that reason, I can't support that.
Mr. Heath, could you give us the rationale for the difference between a separation agreement and a firing, and why one is recommended over the other?
This is our typical procedure, and during the investigative interview, the employee resigned on the spot. Typical after that is to enter into the separation agreement. In this situation, the district actually stopped payment and stopped benefits on that day. This is a no-cost separation agreement that releases that employee from working in our district.
So just to confirm, if I may ask a question, she's not receiving any sort of severance or benefits package?
No.
Okay. Another area of clarification, in the document that is in regards to the separation agreement, I think item four that we all received, I have some concerns about that. Sorry, I'm just pulling it out. My computer just went out. Does anybody have that language?
Yeah, it basically says that...
There it is.
The reference process, if this individual is only allowed to receive a reference from Mr. Heath, not from anybody else, and that just, that struck me as concerning.
So, and then the Exhibit A that's included in it basically just states, like, this employee was employed with us from this date to this date, doesn't give any additional details. And so I have, I have more concerns as well, because if the employee resigned on the spot, to me, that says, like, I don't understand why we're going to offer a second chance, per se, to an employee by giving them a reassurance of a letter, basically of recommendation, when they voluntarily were agreeing to separate from us without us even asking. To me, I'm like, that doesn't make sense. Like, why are we offering this person additional coverage and the reassurance of, hey, you know, you could use this letter to go and apply tomorrow for a bus job somewhere else where other kids could, you know, like that, I just, it doesn't sit well with me. I don't, I don't understand what the, why we're doing that extra step. I know it's protocol, but maybe we need to look into, for the future, into those steps, because my background is HR, and I just find that to be a very odd practice, especially when we have documented proof of situations like this.
Do you have anything more specific, or like, okay?
If the letter just verifies their employment and the dates, it's not a qualitative reference, is it?
No, it's a very neutral statement.
And isn't that typical under the law?
Yes.
Right. I mean, I would think that we want to check with our attorney to ensure that we're not, we're not breaking any laws regarding her future opportunities, or hindering her ability to be employed down the road. So, yeah, I just don't know. I mean, if this is protocol, I'd expect that we already follow laws, and we follow the most recent employment laws and requirements. So... and we follow the most recent employment laws and requirements, so I'm not seeing the issue here. Though, this employee is, like, as Mr. Heath said, left on their own accord, from what you were saying, right, Mr. Heath? Like, they said, "I no longer want to be employed." So, it does, to me, this one just doesn't make sense.
Why not stop there?
Right, why not stop there? Like, I've seen these, I've voted for them in the past, but this one, to me, just is different, and I can't justify it.
I just think that maybe down, this is something, like you said, we address, because this is the second time, just in my one year, that we've had this, a similar issue, and maybe we need to set the tone that we, if you're going to do something deliberately that compromises our, you know, students or staff safety, we have zero tolerance policy, you're terminated. So maybe that's something that I think we need to look at down the line.
I think, I mean, she was going to be terminated. It sounded, it sounded like it was the end of the road regardless. It does sound like what I'm saying is we weren't tolerating it. Well, separation agreement, though, is not a release. That's the difference. Like, a separation agreement is not...
But that has to do more with her future employment rather than her current.
Right, so this person could go to Willoughby Eastlake tomorrow and go and get a bussing job.
I understand.
Okay, just want to make sure you understood that portion of it.
The final step is we make the report then to the state officials as far as the violations that took place. Those are obviously seen at the state level, and they look at licenses from there.
And my understanding is, after speaking with the state board member last week, that they are two years behind in any of those reportings.
Does take time, yes.
So that's another issue as to why I can't support this, because it does take, right now, they're two years behind. It won't, they probably won't likely see that until two years.
Is there any more, is there any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Apple?
No.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
No.
Motion carries 3-2.
I'm also recommending approval of Agenda Item D related to administrative staff.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Heath, can you just explain with the longevity? Because the bus director is on here again, and we just approved of the contract last month. So I just want to, can you clarify exactly what that means?
Yeah, so what ends up happening, and you'll see there's another administrator on there as well, when we get the official verification from previous employment, then the longevity clause can be added to their particular contract.
And what exactly, because the contract is two years right now for that individual, what exactly is the longevity clause, just so everybody's aware?
Depending on how many years you've been working in education and different administrative roles as well, there are certain stipend amounts that are added to your overall salary.
Do you know how much that amounts for that individual? And that would be on top of what we approved last month then, right? That's why it's on here.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know that answer. I can get that to you.
Mr. Wade, do you know by any chance? I'm putting you on the spot.
No. And, no.
Is this something that is negotiated per person, or is this a standard, like, agreement for all of our administrators?
Longevity is negotiated in the, it's in the teacher's contract.
That's...
So it's spelled out in there, so I can't speak to it, like, off the top of my head, to be clear, and that's what's used for administrators, because they're certified staff as well.
Okay, so it is part of their union contract?
Well, administrations aren't union.
Oh, the administrative contract.
The administrative contract.
The administrative benefit package speaks to the longevity, then ties to the contract for the union.
And is it typical that we don't receive that information when we first hire somebody? And that this is, like, added on the next month and when we get their tenure?
Yeah, it depends on when the paperwork comes back from other employers, because we have to send that out to the different districts that they've worked with.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll get you the exact numbers here.
Thanks.
Any more discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Can I confirm who motioned and who seconded?
I motioned.
I seconded.
You did. Ms. Apple?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We will now move to board business. Before we begin board business, I would just like to thank our maintenance workers who have put in some extensive work with winter snow removal. In addition, I'd like to express my support for all of our support staff and our educators who do their best daily to put our students first. And a special thank you to our educators who advise clubs and sports, because it is a tremendous investment of time. And it really just couldn't be possible for our students to have the opportunities that they've had without the dedication of these individuals. So it's often a thankless job. I've done the coaching and advising myself, and I know it's a lot of extra time for minimal amounts, but I want you to know that you're very appreciated. And with that, I just want to move on to board business. So the first item under board business is the approval of a Menor Public Library trustee reappointment. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Apple?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of the January 2025 Board of Education meetings.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I was just, I know we talked about having a special meeting to talk about the levy, and then also, I think Niola was going to be in that one. Do we have any date for that, since we're going over dates, just so the public is aware of, you know, when that meeting might be, that special meeting?
So my understanding was that Niola was going to be in the regular meeting, but in the special meeting, we were going to do the revenue, because we wanted to just leave it just for revenue meeting? Is that what everyone else thought?
I was understanding we were doing both. I don't know. Oh, I didn't, I had a different understanding, I guess.
Yeah, I think the Niola updates is going to be pretty long, right?
Yeah, that's, there's a lot of updates to that one.
Do that, just combine maybe that with the levy discussion?
Well, I thought we were doing those at regular meetings, since we disbanded the committee. Is that not what we're going to do now? Well, I thought, my understanding was, we were going to have a separate meeting.
We can do, I mean, I don't have a preference. We can do either way.
Because they're only twice, I mean, it's really only twice a year with those big, and there's a lot, like, I looked at the updates, there's a lot of updates. And I don't think we want to do that at a regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
Would we like to do part, like, half at a regular meeting and half theirs to break it up a little bit, or maybe see how far we get?
With the, yeah, maybe we do the levy meeting and do the levy portion first, and then, you know, we have a hard stop even if we want, and then whatever's left over, we can take it from there, if that, I don't know. Which is, there are a lot of updates.
We're going to do the levy revenue discussion after the organizational meeting or before?
After, probably, since it's only on the 7th. That's pretty... Yeah. I would say after. Yeah, because we're pretty close to Christmas and stuff.
No, no, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant time-wise, like, 5 o'clock or like 7:00.
Oh. So you mean, like, add it to the organizational meeting?
Yeah, I think we were thinking a whole different...
Oh, you're thinking a whole different day.
Yeah, because the Niola updates are probably going to take at least, I would say, at least an hour.
Okay.
And then the levy one would be lengthy, I would assume.
So doing those two topics on a special meeting outside of the 7th and the 14th?
Yes.
So adding a third meeting to January?
Yeah, it'll just be fun.
Your guys' definition of fun is drastically different than mine.
No, my definition is probably exactly what you think in regards to meetings.
So January 7th would be 6:30 tax budget hearing, 6:45 organizational meeting. The 14th, the regular meeting where we may be doing some of the Niola policies, or it could be the second reading of them, if we had a meeting in between. It could be the first or the second reading, depending on how it goes, I guess. And then if we did a revenue meeting after the 14th, it could be the second reading of Niola, or if it was...
So can we clarify, I know, Mr. Heath and I, you were going, we were going back and forth about this too, because our normal process now for any board member to, yeah, we need clarification on this. So for any board member to bring up change to a policy or introduce a new policy, which some of these are new policies with Niola that we haven't had, they have to then put it on for discussion. We discuss it first, so it's actually three meetings, and then the next meeting is a first reading, then the next meeting is a second reading and vote. So I don't think we really went through exactly what this is going to look like.
Yeah, because I think the thought was with that Board Policy Liaison Committee that that would be the group that would review those. That way, we could bring those to a first reading. You know, if there's any additional discussion at that first reading, then do the second reading for the approval. If we pull that committee off, do we now have to do a new business, then a first reading, then a second reading? Or, you know, like, I know we've got policies on here tonight for the healthcare updates, which I think are relatively simple updates, but, you know, how do we want to approach these things here in the future? I think would be, I think what we would need to do.
Yeah.
Again, I think, I think it's always best to have it under new business as a starting point. Get the discussion done. If there are any tweaks to the policy, we have that taken care of for the next meeting. We can put it on for a first reading and then, then the approval. So that would be three separate meetings, depending on how many meetings we end up having a month now. Maybe we just meet once a week and call it done.
But those Niola updates are only twice a year, and sometimes during lame duck, we get an extra one, like Mr. Wade said, we get an extra one February-ish. So, I mean, that's not a lot to ask for if we're just going to do, like, if there are a lot of updates to do a separate meeting.
And typically, we're going to know ahead of time from a lame duck session what's coming through. Bathroom policy is a great example of one, you know, where obviously we would have that new, under new business well ahead of when that, that law would be coming into place. So that, yeah, I think in the future, that's probably the way we need to approach all of those.
So since there are some that may be new policies, then we could have it not necessarily as a first reading with the levy meeting, but just discussion, and then the following month, first reading, then a second, and a vote? Is that what you were thinking? Is that in alignment with what you just said?
Yeah, there's a, there's a third option. What we, what I did in a former life is I would break up policies that we'd release to the board into chunks.
True.
So I would get them in, let's say, August, and then I would review a section and give them to them in, like, October, November, and December, so that you'd have, like, a rolling. So you do, it's like a first reading of a section in October. Then you get a new first reading in November, while you're approving the second reading for the, you know, the ones in November, and you're not biting off more you can chew, and then you could do it during the regular meeting.
I like that. Sorry, I was just going to say, because I'm a little concerned with, not that I don't love getting together with you fine people often, but I am worried that we're having a lot of meetings, and of course, we have to be paid every time we meet. So, you know, more meetings, more of us, rather than just me and Rose, as it had been previously as a committee, we've increased the amount of taxpayer dollars we're charging out there to our, the folks in our community. So I want to be cognizant of how much this is going to cost the taxpayer, as opposed to, you know, is there another way we could do this more efficiently that would save us some money? But I think, if, sorry, if we're going to do the levy one anyways, I think it just made sense. That's why we said, like, we could just add Niola, because if we're going to have a meeting anyways, might as well throw it on there.
And again, based on timing on that meeting, and we can, we can always do part of it at the organizational meeting. We could do part of it at the regular meeting, those sorts of things too, so we can knock some of these out. I do like that idea, because we've done, I've done that in previous districts as well, where we kind of break those Niola updates into different chunks and just do a few each month. And then you, it's like a first reading, a second reading, and you've got both things going on at the same time.
The only thing with that, could you prioritize if there was a bill, like, say, the bathroom bill that passed? Can you prioritize that in the first chunk, like, immediate?
Yep, absolutely. And again, if we run into situations like this where we've got a hot-button topic that we know we want to address, you know, those will go through that normal process and, you know, not waiting for a Niola update to get those things done. Those would be part of our normal conversations with a new business, first reading, second reading.
So, you know, maybe we need to just continue our discussion, and we could, we could do this later, about maybe continuing committees. And we could, in the past, we've done committees where, you know, I liked having the levy, I liked having the committee that would leverage, like, sections, you know. We had two people assigned kind of to each section, so it wasn't so much for a lot of people, you know, if that was the issue, but we could kind of be a little bit more effective if we want to revisit having a policy committee, or maybe we all kind of serve at different times on policy.
I think the issue was more, we still, it was just one, it was actually adding to the process. So if you, if you, so to your point, it's more money for us to, even just to pay the two of us, because having that committee, we, two of us are just, are having discussions, but we still have to then have discussion on it at a next meeting with everybody, and then a first reading, and then a second reading.
But at the policy committee, you're not paid.
You don't get paid.
So you go to the policy committee, and, and then we have two people just kind of hashing it out to bring it to the first reading.
The problem, I think, that we ran into is there could be, like, Open Meetings Act issues with that, because if I had already, let's say, like, the bathroom bill. Let's say we, you know, let's say we didn't have discussion on it, and Rose and I had already talked about the bathroom bill and wanting a policy with Niola, and then she goes and discusses with Lauren at, at the policy committee, that she would not be able to talk about certain things if we had already discussed them. So it makes that part... But what we're discussing in those committee meetings are what Niola has given us, so unless...
Two points on that, though, and it's also an open meeting, because we...
And we do sunshine it.
We do sunshine it.
Now, we didn't always though, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, definitely do. So we do now.
Just as a point of reference, that could be a concern if we didn't sunshine it, but now that we sunshine it...
But even if it's not considered like a telephone, a daisy chain, if those, if like, I'm not at that meeting...
But you could be at that meeting. Everybody could show up to the committee meeting. It's a sunshine meeting notice.
And I don't think, and we're not talking about, oh, we would vote one way or the other way, you know. We're literally reviewing strike-throughs and additions to the text that Niola sends us. I mean, that's what's happening in those meetings. But then it does prevent, if they do that meeting, then Rose can't come back to me, for instance, or you can't go back to Maggie and say, "Hey, this was in the update, and I have a problem with this. You're going to have an issue with it. You know, let's talk about it," right?
I don't know, because it's in an open meeting, so it's, there's a, there's a record of it, that's...
So if we could get clarification, because I believe we...
Well, I'm clarifying, I'm positive, because it's an open meeting, it's been sunshine, there's a meeting minutes that have to be taken at that meeting. Anything that's discussed at that meeting is common knowledge, so to speak, whether you're there or not, right? I mean, there should be enough just, that Rose shouldn't be saying anything that wasn't, or even Maggie calling you and saying, hey, you know, having a discussion about what was there, it's, it's all, should be public record.
Okay, so, so...
Because it was sunshine. But let me preclude this, I don't want to drop down this rabbit hole. Like, I'm more of a fan of, let's break it up and, I mean, if you're giving opinions here, like, I'd rather just break it up and do it as one, and that way, we don't have issues until we can get through and get everybody on board and we're in better agreement. I think there's something to be said for that.
Yeah.
And if we need to have a special meeting, because there's a specific topic, a group of topics that we want to really delve into, we've done that in the past, and I think that that has worked out nicely for the board.
Yeah, as long as we continue to err on this, and I know you're very good about this, it's just avoiding setting up separate meetings and charging the taxpayers.
Yeah, I'd rather be efficient, yeah, 100%.
I keep hearing that, but I can't, I can't, I understand what you're saying, but also, like, three days before I went on vacation last year, and everybody knew I was going on vacation, you guys called a meeting when I couldn't attend it. So I thought that was a waste of money as well. So I understand what you're saying, but I think there's some validity to my point there. So, honestly, also, just real quick, to Maggie's point with assigning people to sections, I don't like that, because when you and Ginny were assigned to the section, when we did the Niola updates, I wasn't made aware that we were removing the religious time release policy that we did have with Pepel and Wagoner. And then we approved of hundreds of, hundreds of policies, and I clearly didn't catch that that was being removed. I wasn't assigned to that section, but I also didn't catch it when we went over the hundreds of policies. So I prefer not to do that.
So again, just to clarify, we don't have the committee when... When we get the Neola policies, Mr. Wade and I will take a first crack at prioritizing those and breaking those up so that we can do a small section each month over a, a three or four month process. That way we keep those as efficient as possible moving forward.
That sounds good.
Okay, perfect.
Can, can I just get clarification? I'm having a hard time hearing tonight, clearly, but, because it's like when Rose talks, it doesn't come from my right side, it's coming from down here, like I hear it over by Lauren. I don't know what's going on, Paul. So like I think I've screwed up every motion and second. Who's seconded? I know Annie motion for the, the dates, who's seconded?
I think Rose.
I did not remember.
Are you okay with me giving you? And then just to be clear for, for me to be prepared, we're gonna, I'll try to schedule a meeting sometime between the organizational meeting and the end of January for a revenue meeting, correct? Okay, and I'll have some data between some discussions that I had an email with Annie and a phone conference with Maggie that I'll share with everybody this weekend, I have data as well, that is relevant to that discussion to the breakdown of costs and things. Sorry, Ms. Mizeka.
So we're going to do policy discussion after the organizational meeting rather than the levy discussion.
Yes, yes, that's what I understand.
I'm understanding.
Are we going to break that up, some at the organizational meeting and some at the regular meeting? And then if we need to break it up into a third at the other meeting we're going to have for revenue?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, and then the two of us can take a look at those and figure out, we'll start our prioritization right now and we'll figure out which ones.
We can. If there's anything we want to add, I already gave the board my updates, so they have a good chunk of them already, so we could do to help you.
Find the answer to the organizational meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll take the organizational meeting.
Okay, perfect.
All right, any more discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapla.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Five zero.
Next, we have the appointment of President Pro Tem for the January 7th, 2025 organizational meeting. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Mrs. Cook to remain as our President Pro Tem for this transition.
I will second that in the name of consistency.
I nominate Mrs. Payne. I know historically, the President Pro Tem ends up being the President at the organizational meeting and I, I think she's the utmost tenured person who has not had that opportunity to serve as President or Vice President. And I think it's just appropriate to afford her that opportunity. This is her, going into her final year, so.
Okay, so we have two nominations.
So what I'll do is I'll call your name and then you would just state who you were going to vote for.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Ms. Iapla.
Mrs. Payne.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Mrs. Cook.
Ms. Marchaza.
Mrs. Cook.
Ms. Payne.
Myself.
Ms. Cook.
Myself.
President Pro Tem for the January meeting is going to be Ms. Cook.
I just want to state, I hope, I hope that this is not an indication of what's going to happen at the organizational meeting and that we have another issue as last year and that we have balance and fairness and our, for President and Vice President.
The last item under business is the first reading of the Mentor Board of Education Neola Healthcare Policy Updates. And because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary.
I do have some questions though. Can we talk about that? So I, I just had a question. Why are we removing the asthma inhalers? I know we have Narcan for, you know, students, but with the asthma one. So I have that question and I don't know if you just want to piggyback off that one because I have one more and then that's it.
Sure.
What about the training for food allergies? Why are we removing that? Training for food allergies, like if somebody's anaphylactic or whatnot?
So it goes back to what we actually do in practice right now. So we do not have the asthma, the general asthma inhalers. Those are done on a case by case basis for each individual student now. So, so that's where that takes place. And those individuals that are part of that student's world on an annual basis are in meetings to, to figure out exactly what it is that their, their needs are going to be during the course of the school year. So that's why the, the general, the generalities that we had in that policy are actually being removed because we don't do the general asthma inhalers. And then the second one was.
The food allergies.
The food allergies. Same situation. Again, we go through Public School Works Training with all of our employees, number one. So everybody gets a little touch of that. And then each year, when we have our health plan updates for each individual student on an annual basis, those are, those individuals, again, part of that student's world will be part of those meetings to make sure that everybody knows the protocols for.
Does the, I remember we had an individual come in who tragically lost his daughter, I believe, to a food allergy and he had, his organization had given us EpiPens.
Allison Rose, yes.
Yeah, do we, so are we still retaining? Okay.
Yeah, that policy is still in place. And again, just for everyone here too, these healthcare policies, we knew going in with the Neola manual that some of those would need to be updated based on what our practices are. And I just want to thank our nurses and health techs who actually went through the process of identifying, of identifying those policies, number one. Asking the clarifying questions that were needed and then offering those language suggestions just to meet our needs. So they did a great job with this. And there was a lot of them because there were several that I didn't even bring forward because we were just able to clarify some questions in those policies as well. So the ones that physically had changes are the ones that are presented here this evening.
I, I did have a question as well. With the use of medications, there was a form that was eliminated.
So one of the other things that we'll continue to do over the next couple of years here probably as we go through all of our policies, what Neola does is they actually have a, so they've got the policy manual, the administrative guideline manual, and then a forms manual. So all of the references to forms are references to the Neola forms. And we don't have the Neola forms. We're not utilizing those pieces because we already have all of those standalone forms.
Standardized here, it's just not that form.
It's just not the form number that they're indicating.
Thank you.
Actually, I had one more weird thing. The, the, and I'm going to totally say this wrong, glucagon?
Yeah.
For diabetes, I believe?
Yeah, same thing.
There was something weird in there though. It said wholesale, wholesale distributions of dangerous drugs. Like we're going to be getting free.
So that, that's all being removed.
Okay, thank you.
Because again, we don't do that.
Yeah, no, thanks.
I just had a couple of things. The, I think one's just a typo. The, where it's on 5330, it said authorized parent and all throughout we added guardian and that was left out of that, that particular one. So I don't know if it needs to just, that was just a typo.
So for 5330, adding the word guardian.
Yeah, it just says, it just said authorized by parent. And then I have the question about the forms too. There seemed like there were a lot of forms that we were getting rid of, but.
Yeah, we, we've got our own forms. Those form numbers are referencing the Neola forms. So that's, and we'll probably have a lot of those little updates as we go throughout the next couple of years, just to eliminate those. We tried to catch a bunch of them first thing, but some of them made it through.
Yeah.
Because there were a lot of policies in that manual.
And then just to clarify what you had said about the inhalers. Is it like, if a student has asthma, is, do they have to have a backup provided at the nurse's office? For, like what are we, how do we handle an emergency?
So they'll, they'll work through all of that with each individual family at the beginning of the year. And whether that's a medication that is kept in the nurse's office or on their person, we make sure that there are backups in place. And you said 5330, is that the one?
5330, yeah.
Got it?
Yes.
All right, any more discussion there? All right, thank you. Next, we have the legislative report from Ms. Marchaza and I know they are busy at the State House.
It's a long one, I'm afraid, yes. All right, excuse me. So starting with updates from the State Board. The Senate Education Committee approved Governor Mike DeWine's appointment of Amy, I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, Fugati or Fugate, to the State Board of Education. She's a retired teacher from the Dayton area. She was appointed back in March, so they're just confirming. The ODEW presented to both the Senate and House Education Committee on the State Report Cards College Career Workforce and Military Readiness Measure that I believe Mr. Heath is being rolled out next year, if I'm not mistaken.
What was that again? I was looking for that policy.
No, you mentioned it at the Cardinal Cafe, but this is the ODEW's new college career workforce readiness.
Yeah, we're looking forward to having that component because I think we'll score well. Yes.
I think we will. No, that's quite all right. Okay, up to a very busy State House. So first of all, we've got newly elected leadership, as we all know. The newly elected members of the House and Senate held informal votes to decide chamber leadership for the next General Assembly, which starts in January, the 136th. The Republican Caucus elected Matt Hoffman to be the next Speaker of the House and Rob McCulley to be the next Senate President. The Democratic Caucus reelected Allison Russo to serve as the House Minority Leader and Nikki Antonio to serve as the Senate Minority, Minority Leader. These elections still do need to be finalized on the floor in January when they officially meet for the first time in the new assembly. So yes, lame duck, we're down now to the last couple of weeks here and it is going to continue to be very, very busy. I'm going to give you the highlights as best I can. They, again, with lame duck at the very end of the year, they're just really trying to push through everything they can, everything they've been working on throughout the last two years. And they are scheduled to meet a lot over the next two weeks, December 11th tomorrow and the 18th. There was even a Senate Education Committee meeting as we were going into our executive session earlier today. So there's, they're very busy. Passed into law, we have of course Senate Bill 104. This is going to be discussed later. We're going to talk about how we're going to implement some of that or, you know, maybe some complications around that. So basically, this was originally a different bill. As a reminder, it was about the College Credit Plus Program, but in the last hours before the General Assembly's summer break, they actually added in the, as it's known, Protect All Students Act. And this is regarding single sex bathroom access in schools. The governor did sign this bill on November 27th. The last time we met, he hadn't yet signed it. He did indeed. This goes into effect either February 19 or 20, we're not quite sure yet. But that is the official date of when it will go into effect as law. On the desk with the governor's signature right now, we have at least three bills. Senate Bill 78, this would make retired teachers who are re-employed in positions covered by the State Teachers Retirement System, also known as STRS, eligible to seek election to that same board. House Bill 70 will require schools to adopt a policy regarding the administration of over the counter medications. We already have one, so that's no big deal for us. House Bill 432 passed, which is great news for us. This is going to create alternate credentialing pathways for career tech educators. This is the one Dr. Joe Glavine testified down at the State House floor, so we're thrilled to see that go through. And other good news, it also includes some fixes to Senate Bill 29, which had to do with monitoring of personal, excuse me, school issued devices. And it's going to basically make those notifications much more manageable for us going forward. That bill, important to point out, includes an emergency clause, which just means that this is going to go into effect right away as soon as the governor signs it. And we're assuming he will. Okay, so committees and pending legislation, this is where it gets very busy. So Senate Bill 407 is first on my list. This one is, if I did report on it, I believe, last time. But this is known as sort of like an accountability measure for non-public schools. It was sponsored by Gail Manning and Bill Seitz. They introduced it earlier this year and it had a number of measures that would have included some accountability measures and oversight for private and non-public schools receiving taxpayer dollars. However, there was a substitute bill with changes that was adopted last week during the Ohio House Primary and Secondary Education Committee meeting and it eliminated a lot of those provisions. So for example, it would have required private schools to submit an annual report to the ODEW showing how their state taxpayer dollars funds were received from the voucher scholarship programs. The bill will also would have required the ODEW to post those reports on its website. Also removed was a requirement for private schools to annually report the income of the families for each voucher scholarship that was used. So that unfortunately was removed as well. It removed the requirement that voucher scholarship students take the same standardized tests as public school students. So the only provision that was kept in this is that the ODEW will issue state report cards for private schools that enroll scholarship students. So that's just what happens sometimes with legislation. It just ends up looking a lot different than it did when it was introduced. House Bill 206 regards public school expulsion for actions dangerous to others. This is, this one just passed the House and we haven't, I don't think that I've reported out on this one, but the gist with this one is it's going to allow school boards to create policy if they choose to, authorizing a superintendent to expel a student for up to 180 school days for, this is I'm quoting from the bill, "For actions the superintendent determines pose imminent and severe endangerment to the health and safety of other pupils or school employees." And then that superintendent would have the ability to extend that expulsion or suspension numerous times after that. So that one might not end up looking like this by the time it gets to the end of lame duck, so we shall see. House Bill 8, this one's moving rather quickly. This is known as the enact, the Parents' Bill of Rights. And it requires, it does a couple of, well, a number of things now. It requires for one, public schools to adopt a policy on parental notification regarding student health and well-being. So that has to do with everything from academic performance to sickness, physical injury, trauma, bullying, harassment, and, and counseling. So we would have to, and as I assume that we, we actually do, report to parents if any of those things do occur with their children. It also requires public schools to adopt a policy on parental notification about any instructional materials with quote sexuality content that is defined in the bill as quote, "Any oral or written instruction, presentation, image, or description of sexual concepts or gender ideology provided in a classroom setting," end quote. Additionally, well, this, this currently sits in the Senate Education Committee. Yesterday, and this is how fast things are moving, it could have changed again today, but yesterday, the, if you all recall the, and I'm sure you do because we had a discussion about it last week, House Bill 445 and its companion bill in the Senate, Senate Bill 293, which has to do with religious release time during public school hours. This was added to this House Bill 8. So again, that's just what happens as we get close to the end of the General Assembly timeframe. They really want to move things through and I know that Jason Stevens, who's the current Speaker of the House, noted that this piece of legislation is a priority for him during lame duck. So I do anticipate this one moving through. Okay, Senate Bill 295, this one I reported out about last time we met, but there wasn't much to say because it was a placeholder bill. So again, what that means is really just, they don't have the language they want yet, so they wait and wait and wait. And then last week, we actually got to see the language they added to the bill. And what this one does is it's, initially, they just said, hey, we want to revise the criteria around what we use, the criteria we use to close down public schools. So there's already this criteria that exists. Their intention was, they just declared their intention to like, hey, we want to, we want to look at this. We want to revise it. So we just learned how they want to revise it last week. And it's really, it, it expands the criteria. Basically, there's, they have the ability to close more schools with a different set of criteria, basically. And I think the most important part of this though, is that, that we should all be aware of, especially as a school board, is that it, it removes the control of the local school boards to close down those schools and it gives it instead to the Ohio Department of Education and workforce. So that's really important, is that removal of local control over to the state. I do have a couple of other things too that I, I want to make sure that we touch on because we all received or should have received an email from OSBA about a couple of pieces of legislation. One being an amendment about transportation for public school, for public schools. And then another one regarding the suspensions bill that I just mentioned. So OSBA, the Ohio School Board Association, has contacted us requesting our support and advocating on both of these pieces of legislation because they feel that they're kind of moving a little quickly and that both of these pieces of legislation address really complex systems. And they would like to see for one, at least, a work committee kind of put together so that we can explore it a little more closely, a little more carefully, not like in just the remaining two weeks of lame duck. the remaining two weeks of lame duck. The transportation amendment specifically, the language is not finalized yet, but from what we can ascertain, the Senate's considering this amendment that will change the process and procedures for declaring students impractical to transport. That has come up a number of times here at our table because it, basically, these are private school students that we're busing to their schools, and there are a set of criteria that we use to determine if any of those students are therefore impractical for us to transport, and instead, we offer them a payment in lieu of that transport. So basically, the Senate's considering this as an amendment. It'll tack it, they'll tack it on to some other bill that is moving through. And again, OSBA is just asking us to advocate for, let's slow down and take a closer look at this, maybe revisit it in the 136th General Assembly rather than pushing it through. I think they feel that there's a lack of transparency there. So, you know, we can leave it up to each of us individually to pursue that advocacy, or if you're interested, I can certainly help people write, you know, testimony if they so choose to do that, but they've asked us to contact our senators and the Senate Education Committee. So let's see, that is it, I think, for the, that's it for the legislative report. I think, I'm open to any questions if people have questions or concerns.
I have some comments. House Bill 8, for Mr. Heath. If House Bill 8 passes, which I'm assuming it will, that then would, we would be required to do things a little bit differently with the books, especially in an elementary school. I know I've had some concerns I brought up that, you know, parents are not notified of the books that their kindergarten through fifth graders are reading during silent reading time. I brought it up for the last few years since that collaborative classrooms book collection was put into place because it does have sexuality in there. It does talk about gender identity. So I think that that, we really have to keep an eye on that because if it passes, we won't be in compliance unless we, you know, do something different there. And then also, obviously, with the sexually explicit material, I think, would fall under that as well, so we would have to probably flag some of that stuff. We'll have to follow it very closely.
I think to add to that, yeah, we, just like with any of these other bills that we've been discussing, you know, we're going to get that guidance from Neola. They are the experts on policy writing, and any of these that are passed into law will have some time, right? It's, again, just like with SB 104, that's not going into effect until the end of February, so we will have some time to think through things, understand the implications, and hear from the experts who write the policy to comply with these laws.
The only issue with Neola is if this passes, and it's not, let's say it's, if a bill is passed, it's the time that we may need since Neola only updates twice a year, unless it is during lame duck. So if it passes during lame duck, we should get an update around February.
And if there's something that's pressing like this, Neola will do a special, a special release as well, so that'll be something that we can certainly ask for them to.
And if they don't, then we would have to. Regardless, we have to change.
Yeah, we'd have to change our practice to make sure we're in compliance with the law, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you so much for going into such detail because it does help us plan these things. You know, we're thinking through it, and we're able to plan so much more in advance to make sure that we're in compliance with the law because we want to protect our district. We want to be in compliance with whatever new things come out, so I appreciate that detail. The question that I had, the amendment on transportation that you're thinking of, do we have any idea? I mean, are they looking to expand transportation to private schools? Are they looking to reduce it? Are they looking to be more flexible?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I had the same question, and I, so I reached back out to OSBA about that, and I've been in communication with the individual who emailed us. It is still in a very formative stage, which means it could change, and we also don't know what bill it's going to be attached to. Right now, it looks like they may be expanding the criteria of students who can be transported. So it, I don't know, though. I mean, the language here looks like it's something that we already do, but then there's also the mention of maybe some special ed students, which, again, we also already do. So we'll just have to wait. It changes day to day. So as I get input, and I'll stay in touch with her, I will, I will make sure to share that out as soon as I learn, especially if this takes in any, like, final form in the next few days.
Thank you. I mean, again, we just want to make sure we're compliant.
Absolutely.
Especially with transportation. As we know, transportation is really a very tricky thing for us. It's costly, so if we're adding routes and drivers and buses, insurance, those things, we need to be able to budget for that, and we're already struggling.
I had some similar questions that you guys had as well. I've got an Alliance for Higher Quality Education meeting on Friday, and hopefully we'll get some clarification from them as well because they do a lot of advocacy work around public school districts as well.
Thanks, thank you. All right, any more discussion? Thank you. Next, we have the Student Achievement Report, Mrs. Juslin.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Katske, terrific. Winter break is just days away, completing the first semester of the 24-25 school year. Students across the district are actively involved in learning activities. Here's a sampling of the opportunities and events of the past month. As affirmed by our strategic plan, Framework for the Future, Mentor Schools is committed to expanding college and career readiness opportunities. On November 25th, Governor Dewine's Cabinet member, Steve Dakin, visited our district. As the Director of the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, he wanted to learn about the big move within our strategic plan centered around career technical education. We were also joined by Dr. Sunil Ahuja, the President of Lakeland Community College, who shared additional information on how we are attempting to connect CTE programming with College Credit Plus coursework moving forward. Director Dakin toured our Lakeland at Paradigm classrooms and then visited the CTE programming spaces that will be renovated using the Career Technical Education Equipment Grant Funds awarded to our district by his department. He was very impressed with our district's direction involving these student-centered initiatives. Third graders at Hopkins Elementary have been busy developing their research and literacy skills for their animal report presentations. Each student was assigned one of their top three choices and given questions to answer about habitat, diet, physical features, and place in the food chain. Using books and online resources to gather information, students created habitat dioramas and developed slides for their final presentations. Whether in the classroom or via Zoom, the students shared their work with classmates, family, and friends by navigating through each slide and describing their dioramas in detail. These young students impressed the audience with their confidence and success. Bravo to their teachers who challenged and supported them throughout the essential learning process. A recent article in Cardinal Nation, Mentor High's student newspaper, written by Victoria Pavcak, was recognized by Scholastic News and their Best of School Newspapers Online Network. The 16-year-old Mentor High junior came to the United States in March of 2023 to escape the war in Ukraine. She's now earned her green card to establish residency. Victoria wrote about the ongoing war in Ukraine from her eyewitness perspective and why it is important. The students at Mentor's Lake Elementary showcased their Four Houses, One Family school-wide program last month. Lake has incorporated the house system to create a culture of belonging. Every staff member and all students are engaged, promoting a sense of healthy competition while teaching students how their efforts contribute toward a group. Key team building and achievement efforts center on respect, responsibility, safety, kindness, and academic excellence. We love real-world learning for our students. Framework for the Future celebrates hands-on experiences to engage learners as they create, problem-solve, and build. This special woodworking project had support from the Mentor Schools Foundation to give students a handcrafted toolbox they can use far into the future. There's nothing like learning by doing. On December 3rd, many of our elementary school students performed at the City of Mentor tree lighting for the community's enjoyment. Thank you, Mentor, for inviting our students to share in this festive night. We support our schools and children in our community through varied initiatives, and everyone can help. This spirit of service was front and center during Ridge Elementary's Helping Hands Service Project Night. The students were engaged in an array of special activities, including making blankets for the Linus Project, decorating and filling special treat bags for the end 68 Hours of Hunger Program, making cards for Meals on Wheels recipients, painting sun catchers for local nursing home residents, and creating kitty toys for the Lake County Humane Society. Well done. Last month, Mentor High Fall Cavalry fundraiser was a great success for performers and in supporting Cardinal Voice. This parent organization event features our choir students performing pop and Broadway music solos and small groups for an enthusiastic audience. During Mr. Heath's Cardinal Cafe presentation on November 21st, he shared information on Mentor's state report card ratings and the companion data to show how the district can drill down to best utilize the results to improve teaching and student learning. If you missed it, the program was recorded and can be viewed on YouTube Cardinal TV, Mentor Ohio. We love to hear about Cardinal achievements out in the world. Jamie and Dana Petro Schwendeman are Mentor High alumni from the class of 2009, who'll be performing in this sold-out show, A Winter's Light, at Carnegie Hall in New York City. They offered a special tip of the hat to the Mentor Music Department, whose training prepared them for this remarkable life experience. On December 4th, Fox 8's Weather School was live from Mrs. Delgado's 5th grade class at Ridge Elementary as students delivered the report right between two snow days. A coincidence? We think not. The Cleveland Institute of Music's orchestra, representing one of the premier private conservatories in the country, came to Mentor to share their knowledge and offer an immersive experience to our own high school musicians. The unique opportunity was thrilling for Mentor's orchestra students and gave them a chance to have conversations about future opportunities in music. The spotlight fell on Tiffany Parker from Fairfax Elementary School, who earned second place in the Mentor Police Department poster contest last month. Tiffany's important message is buckle up because the world doesn't want you to get hurt. It was a great season to cheer for our Cardinal athletes. The fall varsity sports had an array of achievements at both the team and individual levels. As we heard this evening, boys cross-country had an outstanding season. They were the Greater Cleveland Conference Champions, District Runner-Up, and State Team Qualifiers. Coach Bill Dennison was the GCC Coach of the Year. Senior Billy Dennison was the GCC Runner of the Year and the News Herald Runner of the Year. For the girls' cross-country team, senior Nora Kraska was an individual state qualifier. The varsity volleyball team was both the GCC Champion and the District Champion. Melody Garrett was named the GCC Player of the Year, and Coach Samantha Weaver was named GCC Coach of the Year. The boys' varsity soccer team and girls' varsity soccer team were each district runners-up, and our boys' golf team were team district qualifiers. The varsity football team had an exciting undefeated regular season. They were the Greater Cleveland Conference Champions and regional runner-up in the postseason contests. Kayden Clare was named GCC Defensive Player of the Year, and Dylan Tackett was named the GCC Special Teams Player of the Year. Senior quarterback Scotty Fox was named the GCC Offensive Player of the Year and the Lake County Offensive Player of the Year, the District Offensive Player of the Year, and the winner of the News Herald Tony Fisher Award. Finally, Mad Gray was named the GCC Coach of the Year and the District Coach of the Year. Hard-felt congratulations to all the student athletes for their hard work, dedication to teamwork, and good sportsmanship, and to their caring coaches who fostered their success on and off the field. It's been a century-long tradition here in Mentor Schools that December is filled with music of the season shared with our community. Our Fine Arts Center has been the special venue for over 30 years, and everyone's invited. The Mentor High Orchestra will perform their holiday concert right here on Wednesday evening at 7:00 p.m., and the Mentor High Band will perform on Tuesday, December 17th. All the high school instrumental and choral groups will perform for the district's 5th graders on Friday morning. This Thursday, December 12th at 7:00 p.m., the Mentor High choirs will present a very special concert. They hope you can be there to hear them. The music, the evening of music will include the premiere of Pebble in the Water. The moving composition by Kim Andre Arneson was commissioned by the Concert Mix Choir to honor the life of their courageous classmate, Jack Sawyer. Here's a short preview of the beautiful piece sung by Jack's friends.
Thank you. Awesome. Beautiful. At this time, we have the Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Heath. Looking at the summary for the month, kind of focusing on that middle section, number two, which kind of goes to how we've done things, we've kind of changed the formatting a little bit. This continues to give us an overview of the entire presentation for the night. But our revenue's trending about $37,981 less than we had projected at the November forecast. Obviously, that's very inconsequential when we're looking at $110 million. And the expenditures are trending about $707,000 better than we expected. Both of those, obviously, variances or timing issues, probably based on when things will be purchased or revenue coming in. Based on this information, we're showing about a $670,000 favorable impact on the cash So when we look at last year's revenue to date for the month, we're up about $216,000, most of that coming in the form of state revenue and investment income, more than half of it coming from the investment income. And then when we look at our actual revenue received through November compared to the prior year, we're up about $1.8 million. Again, about $400,000 coming in other revenue, and state revenue being up as well as our local tax reimbursements, which could be some of our tax split when people decided that they wanted to pay everything all at once rather than, you know, first and second half collections. So nothing out of the ordinary, nothing that is drastically eyebrow-raising, kind of basically trending where we thought we were. When we look at our actual expenditures for the month, this month, we were actually up about $283,000 compared to last year, most of that coming in the form of salary and benefits. And then our purchase services were down this year in comparison to last year at this time. When we look at our expenditures to this year compared to last year as a whole, we're about $2.3 million less than last year. While our salaries and benefits are up, we are down in our purchase services and our other expenditures. And again, we expect that to kind of normalize as we go through the rest of the fiscal year against the forecast based on... against the forecast based on timing of purchases. However, if Mr. Heath and his team continue to tighten the belt and forego certain expenditures, we could see, continue to see that trend as we move throughout. So again, like I said, revenue's trending just slightly under, a tick under where we projected in the November forecast, and our expenditures are about $700,000 less. And nothing really kind of earth-shattering as we're only a month past our November forecast. So we're kind of, I would expect trending where we would think we would be. Happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. If not, that concludes my presentation on the financial update, and I would ask that the Board vote on items B through G, and the addendums acted on one motion, please.
So moved.
I'll give that one to Ms. Jesslyn. Ms. Marchesa, did you want to?
I will second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion?
I had just a quick question I just noticed. Under the resolution accepting the amounts of the tax resolution for G, I just don't know, is that a typo that it says 2025 because we're not meeting today in 2025? Should it say 2024, I assume?
We get that from the auditor. So it's for next year, though, because it's certifying this end-of-the-year rates for this month. So let me...
The way it reads, it says, "The Board of Education of the Mentor Exempted Village School District, Lake County, Ohio, met in blank session on the blank day of blank 2025."
Correct. We will make that correction. That is your accurate there, Ms. Payne.
So do I need to motion to amend that or anything? Or is...
We will amend it to reflect today's date.
Okay.
Thank you.
The bottom one also, the last page needs to be updated as well. Good catch.
Yeah, we will make those corrections when we put them, when we fill it in for the dates.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Please call a roll.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa?
Yes.
Ms. Aapla?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion's carried 5-0. That completes my section of the agenda.
All right. Next, we have one item under unfinished business, and that is the discussion of Senate Bill 104 compliance. And if you remember, at the last meeting, we discussed that we want to make sure that we're prepared when this law does go into effect. And we had asked Mr. Heath to look into some specific areas of where, you know, if, if we're going to have compliance issues, please let us know now. So he did some extensive work, and I'm going to let him kind of explain and maybe just highlight if there's any areas that you think we need to watch or work on.
Sure. So basically, taking a look at Senate Bill 104 and looking at the language, there are basically four different components that we're, we're double-checking right now to make sure we've got our ducks in a row to be in compliance. One, the language out of the bill says that schools are required to designate each student restroom, locker room, changing room, or shower room that is accessible by multiple students at the same time for the exclusive use by students of the male biological sex only or by students of the female biological sex only. So I spent the day before Thanksgiving, when everybody else was gone, going from building to building, looking closely at our restroom signs in each of the buildings to make sure that we do have everything marked appropriately. And at this point, we look to be in compliance with that part of the law without any issues. Second component is to address the use of opposite-sex locker rooms by visiting teams. For example, the visiting boys' basketball team uses the girls' PE locker room during games. This practice would be prohibited based on the plain language of Senate Bill 104. However, it is possible that future legislation may provide a fix to some of that. But just to make sure that we have our ducks in a row here, I discussed this possible issue with our athletic director. We are looking at a couple of possible solutions for this one. One is the possibility of posting temporary signs to use on game days, but we'll have to see if that is going to be allowable based on the law. The second possibility is looking at other spaces within the boys' locker room areas in the gym that might be available on game days for us as well. So that one, we are still working through the final logistics. Third component, the bill states that we are prohibited from permitting a member of the female biological sex from sharing overnight accommodations with a member of the male biological sex. This component will be addressed at our principal meeting next week to make sure we are in compliance and preparation for our spring trips that will be coming up here once this bill is in law. And then finally, number four, the bill states that schools are permitted to establish a policy providing accommodations such as single occupancy facilities at the request of a student due to special circumstances. So again, during the day before Thanksgiving, I identified all of these single occupancy restroom facilities in each building that might allow us to accommodate these requests. I will meet with each building principal to finalize which of the single occupancy facilities can be used to meet the accommodation requests, if that is the direction the Board would like to go. Final thing that I'll, I'll share just from the Board policy standpoint, I did reach out to Neola to ask about policy language for the bathroom bill immediately following the last board meeting. And the response that I received at that time was that they do not write policy until a bill is signed into law. So the day that Governor DeWine signed the bill, I reached out again to see what the process would be. They are meeting with their team of attorneys on December 18th and 19th to discuss Senate Bill 104. So I will be reaching out again on December 19th to check the status of their policy language. Again, just to reiterate, we will follow the law beginning, we think it's going to be February, we've heard everything from the 17th to the 24th, depending on when, you know, how we count to 90. So it's going to be that last week of February is when we're really going to make sure that we have everything ready to go. Whether we have a policy in place or not, we will still be following that law as soon as it is enacted.
Mr. Heath, we had some comments from, from the community earlier where they were just asking, like, why don't we do this right now? So can you explain why?
First of all, obviously, we have a contract with Neola. They have their team of attorneys that will be looking at the language of the newly-signed law, and they will be crafting language, well, potentially, they would craft language that would align directly with what that law would be. So that would be our first step, is to see what they come up with.
Sorry, I don't, I don't mean policy. I mean, why don't we, why?
Oh, why don't we just stop now?
Yeah, I, I mean, the practice now. Like, why, why isn't it right away we have restricted to biological, male biological, female bathrooms?
We still have to follow Title IX guidelines right now. In addition, there's a court case from the Sixth Circuit that we follow here in Ohio that, that dictated that students had the ability to use the restroom of, of their biological or of their choosing rather than their biology. So that's what we will still be under until the new law takes effect. As soon as the new law takes effect, we will then revert to what this new language will be.
Thank you. Can you speak on why this particular issue, you're not looking to put, have a policy? I'm just curious.
Why I'm not looking for a policy?
Right. We keep hearing, you know, last month, we keep hearing, we're going to follow the law, we're going to follow the law. Of course, why is this, we typically, especially an issue like this, we would have a policy. It's kind of what we're here for. Why this one, do we not, are you not, are we waiting for so many, you know, guidelines? Because we kind of, we already know that we, there's no liability to have a policy. So...
Yeah, we're just waiting for the Neola policy language to be presented to us. Once we have that, then we can have that discussion as a Board.
But we did hear that some up here don't want that. If, if Neola says, here's our policy, is that something that you would support recommending?
I'm not going to answer that question this evening, but I will in January.
In January, okay. I just, I just, my concern is that, I mean, this is obviously a sensitive subject for many, and I do have empathy for that, for the people that this affects. And I know that many of you up here that do not agree with the law, and I understand that. But we have to do our job and put our personal views aside, and this is a, I'm very, very concerned. I've been speaking to a lot of people outside of the district and, and just, this, everybody seems to be very concerned as to why this particular one, we're not covering our bases for our employees, for our students, for, our, our names are on lawsuits. You know, my name's up there, your names are up there. So I'm glad to hear, I, I can't imagine that Neola would not have a policy. If they don't have a policy to align with a law like this, then I would question Neola. And, you know, are they, are they the right, the right organization for us to be, to rewriting our policies when they're, to me, that would be taking a political stance. So, you know, we, we can go back and forth again like we did last month. It just makes sense to have a policy for everybody. I mean, there's things like, you know, the law says, you know, we might have a situation if we don't have a policy that a security guard or a teacher is afraid to go into the bathroom to break up a fight or if they think there's an emergency or something because they feel like they might be violating the law. So to have policy stating that, you know, that is an exception and that is allowed, you know, if you're going to have administrative guidelines, you're going to have policy, I'm assuming we are going to send out a mass, you know, email and communication to families explaining it. It's like, what's the point, then, of not having a policy? It's almost as if you, you, you know, we're, it's a personal, it's a personal stance to say, I'm not going to support anything that's aligned with the law. And I just want to make, make it known once again that I, I think it's for, in the best interest of our district, liability-wise, to have a policy as soon as we can.
I'd like to actually turn to compliance because there, despite having this law, I think a lot of questions remain. And to your point, Mr. Heath, I think you had mentioned, you know, maybe there will be fixes, maybe, I mean, maybe there will be lawsuits. I mean, there's still a lot we don't know, including some of these topics that came up last time we met. So I guess, I have a lot of questions, but I'll start with the first. How are we enforcing this, this law? And who are we asking to do so during events and performances where we have, you know, members of the public attending, who, you know, just for, for our students, you know, we have their birth certificates on record, but we don't have that for guests to our buildings at our events, at our performances? You know, what, I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I guess this is a question in general that I feel has not yet been addressed. We certainly can't ask them to verify, you know, if they don't look female enough, if they don't look male enough, you know, what, how exactly are we going to do that?
It's a great question.
Yeah.
I wonder if, if, you know, if you look at other things like around the stadium, they'll have a rule, a sign posted of a rule, and then the policy is listed under there. So I think we have a...
But how are we enforcing it, is the question?
Well, I mean, that's a good question, but, but that's, we, as long as we can protect ourselves and say we're doing, making every effort to make sure.
Who enforces it?
We, people, the same way you enforce any laws.
People?
But we have to, anybody, the person, anybody walking in there.
See, that's what I'm worried about, actually. So I'm really glad you said that because, you know, what happens in our school buildings and our bathrooms with the kids who aren't privy to the birth, birth certificate information that we have on record, and say, student A goes into the bathroom and says, you kind of look like the different, you know, you look, you look like you don't belong here. And then people, like students, start surveilling each other, and I'm just, I'm really worried about all of these potential issues that are going to come up. And we already have, you know, our bathrooms already fraught, spaces with bullying and fights, and I do worry, the law is the law, right? We're going to follow it, policy or no, we're following the law. But I'm thinking about all, this, this is the stuff that keeps me up, right? How are we implying, complying? Who is enforcing? How do we prepare our kids to be in this space, in this newly-regulated space, in this different way? How are we protecting the kids who are directly and most acutely impacted? So these are the things I throw to you because I don't have the answers to these, and I'm really concerned about it.
I think it's similar to like concealed carry, you know?
Concealed carry? Like guns?
Concealed carry rules. Like, we posted on the, on the doors that it's a, that it's policy, that it's, you know, law, and then you, people have to self-police. I don't know what that's going to look like. I, I agree that it's, especially with students, but, you know, I think it's also another reason to have a policy so, because staff are aware of, of our students who might be...
So the staff are going to be enforcing?
They, they enforce all the other policies in handbook that we, that we have, right?
That seems like it needs to be ironed out quite substantially. And unfortunately, lawmakers didn't give us a lot, right? So this is what happens when lawmakers start to really get into regulating what happens in the school buildings, right? That's, to me, problematic because they don't, they're not privy to the myriad details and, you know, existing situations, we'll say, that our administrators are. So already, that's a, that's a problem for me. But then additionally, these sponsors of this bill did not include any, a bit, any funding for us to alter, change, adapt our, our existing structures to comply with this law. It really ties our hands.
Well, not really, because we have single stalls, because we have families that have been, for any reason...
What about at the ballgames at our stadiums? We don't have them there.
No, we don't have them there.
I think, I think we're getting away from the main argument here, which is that we should have a policy, especially...
The agenda item's compliance.
I'm still speaking. You had plenty of time.
I'm just pointing out.
I would appreciate if you didn't cut me off when I'm speaking. I let you speak.
Sure thing.
It seems to be an, an issue that continues with that. So I think that the, the item, which says discussion, Senate Bill 104, and compliance, part of compliance is creating policy, part of enforcing something is enforcing policy. That's what we all do here, is we approve a policy, change policy. So a couple of things, too, that were said. I don't think that the bill not providing us funding is the problem, and I think you stated that the problem is that lawmakers are stepping into the schools. The problem is, in my personal opinion, that when we don't do what the community is calling us to do to protect the majority of students, the lawmakers then step in, and they have to then supersede us. And I think that's what happened here. I, I really take issue with us keep, how we keep saying, we're going to comply with this law, we're going to comply, we're going to, we're going to do everything we can to comply with the law. Then why not make policy? If we're not making policy, it's a political stance that we're taking. It's not because, you know, we, we don't want to comply with it. It's because you disagree, in my opinion, it seems like the majority of the Board disagrees with this bill. And that's not our job to do. Our job is to comply with policy, create, comply with the law, create policy. Almost all of our policies at the bottom reference Ohio Revised Code. Why would this be any different? And it, and my question to you guys would be, if you keep saying we're going to comply with the policy, then would you at least support a policy that states we are going to comply with Senate Bill 104, effective the date it goes into place?
So I, I asked for this to be on the agenda because I really did want to have a discussion, and I wanted to talk about compliance to make sure that we're ready. I have never said that I'm against policy. I said, let's see where the policy is written, and let's see. To me, this is almost like, this is an information gathering piece. If we need policy, this, these discussions will help us draft the policy that we need because we need to know what our issues are. We...
We might have these discussions and decide we don't need policy. We might have these discussions that will lead us to tweak policy that's appropriate for our district. I haven't taken a stance either way on that. So I take issue, I know both of you have said, you know, you're taking a political stance, you're, you're saying no, and that, that isn't true. So that, that rhetoric is just not true. At this point, I'm truly having a discussion and we asked for compliance. I, so I do have a question because I want to get back to compliance. So Mr. Heath gave us a really nice spreadsheet with all like single occupancy restrooms and right now it looks like there's a good number of, I'm just going to look at the high school, there's like four facilities, four single stall, stall facilities that are for students and the, and the rest would be like faculty, like faculty bathrooms. Some of them are more than one stall. But would you propose that, so the students right now, if they're using like the media center or the clinic, the single stalls, do they have special permission to do that or can anyone go in there and use those?
Right now, anybody that wants to go in and use those can use them. Typically, they would need to ask permission of the, the school nurse if they're using the clinic.
Okay.
But they would just walk in there and, and ask at this point.
But is it limited to students?
It's open to anyone.
It's open to anyone. So if anyone said, you know, as long as they say, can I use the restroom, they can use the restroom. Do you see that as changing with this law or do you just feel like it would still be single stall, students would be able, if, if, if my daughter felt that she wanted to use a single stall for extra privacy, she could or not?
Yeah, anyone can use the, the single stall facilities.
And then my next question is the faculty restrooms. Do you see that we would need to convert some of the faculty or do you see it as like kids would also use the faculty or do you think that we can still use with the single occupancy for students?
I think there's enough that we can just use the ones for, for students.
Okay, great. Were there any buildings that are more of a concern?
Ironically enough, the only building that does not have single stall facilities is the board office.
The board office, okay. Thank you. I know the locker room is something you're going to stay on top of and keep us, I, I know the high school has a little bit more flexibility because there, there are more, there, there are two female locker rooms and three male locker rooms. So that, that, that kind of works in our favor. We could probably be okay here. It's probably the middle schools that we're a little more concerned with compliance.
Yeah, and, and we haven't looked closely enough at the middle school facilities to know how that might work, but that's something that we'll look into in the next week or two here.
Okay. I, I appreciate all of the work you did on this because it's going to help us prepare and, and make informed decisions. So thank you.
I had a quick question about the locker room. We have been allowing, you know, biological boys to go and use the, the girls locker room, but we were timing it differently, right? So that they weren't in it at the same time with the other female students, to my understanding that's.
Yeah, I think that's how that, they had worked that in the past.
So how, how is that change going to be communicated? Actually, how are all of these changes going to be communicated? Can't, if we don't have a policy, is it going to be in the handbook?
Yeah, one of the things we'll have to look at is our, our handbook language. Again, if there's some sort of policy that's created, that would obviously be communicated out as well. Again, we're about a, a week away, I think, from, from knowing more, which I think will be beneficial to us here in January to have more discussion. So we'll, we'll be able to have more recommendations at that point in time. But that, the other thing, you know, to everyone's point too, you know, from the enforcement standpoint, that's the next part that we'll be having conversations with our administrative team on is how that, that gets enforced. We've looked at code of conduct and where that might fit and, and then that would lead into a consequence conversation then too. So several different pieces to that, that we still need to consider.
If there is a child that continues to use the bathroom of their gender identity instead of their biological sex, effective after February 19th or 20th or whatever the date is, barring any main, major changes with, you know, law or.
Legal challenges, whatever.
Right, all that. What is the recourse for any females who may be in the bathroom that has a biological male come in that they know is a biological male? What is their recourse? We heard tonight, you know, somebody said, call the police. It is a law and they would be breaking the law. So just if, like what is, what is that child to do? Because we've, we know from parents that kids are not going to the bathroom in certain situations because of this that we're allowing. So that'll stop, but how, what are, what is their, like what are they to do?
Yeah, report it to the principal of that building.
I just had a couple of comments. Bill, not to put you on the spot, what percentage specifically do we get from the state funding?
Uh, let's say, I'd say about 25%. I'll look it up and give you the exact.
Okay, that's okay. It's a lot. So I think there, legislators have every right to make the decisions that they make. They give us their funding, a huge portion of our schools, so. And the single stall restroom issue, I don't know why it's suddenly an issue because parents have been directed and students who have had issues with the bathrooms outside of this, this transgender issue have always been told, well, if you're not comfortable in there, go into the single stall bathroom. It's been, it's good enough for students for how many years? I don't necessarily see why that's an issue now. And then, you know, Ms. Cook, I appreciate your comments saying that you, you want to wait, but it has been communicated that there's no possibility that this board is going to approve a policy. So, you know, it begs the question.
That's not true, nope.
That is not true. That is not true.
No, we just confirmed that earlier in this meeting during the minutes conversation.
Okay, I've heard otherwise. So I, and finally, Mr. Heath, the, did you happen to ask Neola about House Bill 68, the, having to do with our counselors and the over, I know the overnight stay is going to also be, because of the bathrooms and sharing a hotel room. House, Senate Bill 104 will cover that, but are they planning on writing anything on that?
On, on House Bill 68?
Yes.
I, I don't have an answer to that one just yet either, so we'll get clarification here by the end of next week.
Okay, thanks.
At least on House Bill 68, though, I will say that just for the sports portion of it, we do have policy that states we follow the OHSAA bylaws and OHSAA did update their bylaws effective April of 2024 to reflect those changes. So we are not allowing biological males any longer to compete in female sports.
Yeah, if that's the part you're concerned about, that, we, we follow OHSAA guidelines with that.
Yes, well, there's a portion in that bill about what, how, what are the order of operations our counselors have to follow before, when giving advice to students. So that's something I think they should, they should know.
We can look at that part of the policy then too.
All right. Is there any more discussion on Senate Bill 104 compliance? All right, under new business?
Oh, I actually did have something under unfinished business. Just real quick. So the House Bill 8 being brought up reminds me too that we have, I think it's been a year now, we had, had asked for book balance and just for instance, this book, I know I voted against it, I know Maggie and Jenny, you voted to keep it, but the Colin Kaepernick From Free Agent to Change Agent was voted to be retained and it stated, some people believed candidate Donald Trump's speeches often had racist overtones. He stoked fears of immigrants and minorities. Some of his supporters were white nationalists, people who were openly racist and believed that non-whites were inferior. Many Americans were alarmed. And then it goes into talking about BLM as well. So I'm just wondering, so we have that book. The other book, this one was for middle school, The Transphobia, Deal With It and Become a Gender Transcender. This one specifically targets people who believe there are only two genders on the very fourth page and says, transphobia is when actions or attitudes are based on certain assumptions that, first one, everyone is either male or female. So these by definition meet the controversial issues guideline in our policy and I had asked for some balance on this. These two things that were challenged, I voted against it, but they, they were retained. And then additionally, we had some other books as well. The other challenge that we had recently, I don't know, six months ago or whatnot, that was for elementary schools well. So I was just wondering, where are we with the book balance? Have we added anything into our collection to show the, you know, other perspectives to that, that viewpoint?
Yeah, we haven't added anything across the board in any of our media centers at this point. And I'll, I'll be perfectly honest, I haven't had time to, to look at the balance component yet either. So that, that's something that I'll, I'll bring back to the forefront here. Again, I'll be very happy when Mrs. Sturm starts on January 1st for transportation so that we can get back to our normal jobs and roles here.
This discussion.
Is that coming out of House Bill 8? Is that what you referenced?
Actually, no, I don't think it is.
No, 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 no. The only thing, well, what's coming out of House Bill 8 is the sexuality portion of it, but that's.
It's like notifications, yeah.
But what I'm talking about is the, the balance that I think it's been almost, I mean, it'll be almost a year, I think, since we brought that balance piece up. So that was prior to the whole transportation issue.
But remember, we did talk about how we were not ordering any books because we were cutting budget.
But Mr. Heath did say he would look into ensuring that there was balance because it's required by our policy. And if we didn't have balance, and I have yet to receive anything showing that we do a balance. So if we don't have balance, then I was, we were given, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Rose probably remembers, and I'm sure the community does as well. And Mr. Heath, you did say that you would look into and ensure we're following policy and that there is balance and you'd give me books that show balance.
Can you cite the policy number for me, please?
It's whatever the policy is about, library books.
We have the opposing viewpoint series and other research tools that address that very issue. So that if you have a controversial topic, something that's got multiple points of views, let's say climate change would be a good example, it will go over the salient points for someone who believes in one direction, someone who believes in the other direction, and it gives these student citations that's at the middle school and at the high school level.
But does that, does that include topics like BLM, topics like sexuality, gender identity?
Yeah, I mean, there would be things on all, all kinds of controversial topics. I, I haven't looked up Black Lives Matter as a specific search term, but things about racial justice or race in general would be a good example of a topic that would have a variety of different viewpoints surrounding it and you would find those in those research tools. So I, I would expect our sixth through 12th graders would have that readily available.
This book, though, is in all fourth grade classrooms. It's for silent reading time.
We had a lot of discussion about that specific book, but also, you know, that book is a biography, so it's naturally going to surround the life experience and story of that individual. And one of the things we also discussed last year when we talked at length about books, that publishers have available whatever's in print. So trying to buy additional titles is very challenging because you're limited to what's available. We use a wholesaler so that we're paying, you know, for processing all of the online records that you need, the mark records, and then the types of bindings and so forth. So it, it has various, because we mentioned the media specialist tools for making selections on books, which would include reviews from at least two sources and so forth. So it's complicated in some cases to, to do it one for one, but I think in general, if you look at the array of materials, a select, like look at the whole list of titles in a biography collection, I'm talking about the media center, which is different from the leveled books that students are using for classroom enrichment. So I, I think your goal of having balance and variety is worthwhile and that exists.
I think, it's been a long time since we talked about this, but I seem to remember there, there was like, maybe, Mr. Heath, you requested a list of topics that would, that would help you find that balance. Was that provided at any point? Do you have that list that you need?
I've got to look at my notes again. I know it.
I know we sent it to you.
Okay.
Great.
And I'll, I'll find the policy too and, and give everybody an update and the board update this week.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm looking at Policy 2520, but I don't, and maybe that's what.
It was under, I think it was under the book challenge process.
And I'm wondering if that got moved to administrative guideline, so it might be in the guideline as opposed to the policy. I think that's what, what it is. Because I just read through 2520 and it's not there anymore. I think it's in that admin guideline though, because that's a pretty lengthy guideline. But I'll double check and make sure everybody has that.
Thank you.
And one of the great benefits of the parent review process is that it lets a parent who has concerns about any material, for whatever reason, it doesn't have to be sexual topics or even necessarily controversial topics, but as we discussed, a family may have a reason why a particular topic isn't suitable for their child and they're in a perfect spot then to make sure that that's not an issue for their family without encroaching on the array of materials available to others.
The problem is that that doesn't cover silent reading time books, though.
That's, that's something that, as I recall, because they're not in the media center collection, you would have to create some type of a borrowing system and that was not a simple matter. I mean, it doesn't sound like it would be that bad, but it would fall on our IT department to create, and the books would have to be barcoded or marked in some way. That's where I think it makes prudent sense for a parent who does have any concerns to come and take a look at the books that are in the classroom. You know, I can't imagine that any teacher wouldn't be happy, you know, to have a parent come and visit if they needed a little time to look through the selection of materials and let their own child know, this is not a suitable one for our family. And that's perfectly fine.
And we did, we have discussed that and the opportunity for children to bring in their own books, but.
I think House Bill 8, though, will apply to those silent reading times books if it's passed.
Oh, I, I believe that too.
It will, yeah. So we'll, we'll have to do that in any ways when it comes to certain topics.
Yeah, that's why I appreciate, you know, the, the thorough job that Ms. Martoson does with, with telling us about how things apply and then we can really have these conversations to, to make sure that we're all set with plenty of time. But in, good discussions, important discussions to have.
I have a couple more things that I think are unfinished business. Just follow up from October meeting, Mr. Heath. You were checking if security guards have the ability to discipline and then have access to edulclimer?
Um, yes, they, they do not currently have that access.
They do. Is that something?
The, the security guards, as classified staff members, they don't have the edulclimer access. Now, in the conversation I had with Mr. Crowe, he said that that would be something that he could have a, a meeting and discuss some of those issues with those individuals and share some of the information in, in that regard.
Okay. And then you were checking on that there was an increase in searches with the want for vaping and maybe that'll, is going to tie into our next conversation.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll kind of tie that in here in just a second.
I had, when we were talking about our discussion with the speaker last week, you said if we wanted to have more comments, do you want me to do it in unfinished or new business?
Unfinished is fine.
Okay. I just wanted, because everybody got to speak and I, and I didn't get to respond. So I, I know this is a long meeting, so I'll be quick, but I think you guys missed my point. I, I have no problem, she got up there and, and. I have no problem she got up there and made her use her First Amendment right, and she's allowed to do that, and I was not insinuating we stopped her from saying that. My issue is that she is held to a higher standard when she's part of a representative on a board, not just a volunteer, on a board for a school organization, number one. And two, that led, that went on, she went on to exploit her position. Further, we all get attacked. My own child has been attacked by speakers, actually, all my children have been attacked by speakers. My father, my siblings, accusations have been thrown. You're painting me like I'm being overly sensitive, and I'm not. This religion, I think, is one of those things. Religion is, I think we need to take a stand and say, she's allowed to have those comments, but if it was directed at one of you about your religion, I would have certainly stepped up and said something.
Email.
Well, the email is very different, because over a million people saw this, and it was on a recording. Nobody but us sees these emails, okay? So, I understand, they're hurtful, and we all get that, but this is different. And so, you know, I'm not an overly sensitive person. I take it. I take it more than anybody else, I think. Oh, maybe I don't, I don't know. I think we all get it pretty bad, but, you know, I think this was just a missed opportunity for us to say, hey, we know that this is out there, and people heard this, we don't condone this behavior. She's allowed to say it, we believe in it, and that's why she was able to speak. We don't condone this behavior. That's, I think it's a missed opportunity, and I just wanted to make that clear.
I'd like to see that, a response to any of the extreme ugliness or people who make statements that are wholly untrue, I mean, just flagrantly untrue, and there isn't any sort of correction. Because where do you start? Where do you stop? I'm not saying that this isn't an extreme situation. I understand what you're saying, but I'm recalling something that didn't happen to be recorded, because the recording of a meeting had come to an end, and I was shocked by an epithet that an individual commented to another person. And I just felt so embarrassed for our community. So, I do understand. What's difficult is that it's in the moment. Sometimes the better thing is to move on, at least when there have been situations for myself, moving on rather than drawing more attention, because people who are angry and highly motivated will pile on, and it gets worse. So, I don't know what the solution is. I have said before, back at our May meeting, that I wish there was a greater effort towards civility, because we lend an example. As an education institution, we lend an example to the students we're trying to launch on their future pathways. And sometimes I think as adults, we haven't done a very good job of modeling what good civic engagement ought to be. And then that got really blasted, but that's okay. I felt strongly, and that's why I made the statement, but it's been terribly disappointing. And your comment, Mrs. Marzatz, yeah, it is very different. When I took my board seat in January of 2014, it was a different world. And it's been very disappointing, it's very hard. But I believe in the work. I think what we do matters, even if we don't have harmonious agreement. I think it's still something we do our best to keep kids front and center in our decision-making. And you're going to have a cacophony of voices, things people think you're doing all wrong, other people think you're doing just right, and you'll never please everyone. And it can be exasperating when the ugliness has such an edge.
I have a couple of comments. We keep talking about the unkindness, the labeling of others. We don't like it, other people don't like it. But when you put books like these for our students that literally label other people, this one labels people who believe in two genders as transphobic, this one labels police officers, it labels people who voted for Donald Trump. And when we do that, and we consistently put books like that in students' hands, we're not being a good example. So, I take issue with that. I also think it's interesting that we talk about civility, but four months into my board tenure, I was attacked behind closed doors. I was, three of you, not two of you sitting on the board now, made a letter about me, shared it with, well, in cahoots with one other board member, the board president at the time, Mary Briner, and Tom Tuttle handed it to me.
Mrs. Payne, I'm going to stop you right there, because I don't know what you're talking, you've referred to this before, I never wrote a letter. And I know that you say it, but just because you say it doesn't mean it's true. I did not write a letter.
I have the letter, I have it from, sent from Mary Briner to Tom Tuttle. That, he stated, Mary Briner gave it to him to talk to me, called me a bunch of names in this document, talked about board business and how you guys didn't like how I voted that first meeting, and so you created this letter, and she told him it was in conjunction with you and Jenny, and gave it to Tom to talk to me, because he's a Republican, too, and he was supposed to talk to me about getting in line.
Could you show it to us?
I already sent it to you last year. Jenny, I sent it to you in an email. You have it, because you tried coming at me one-on-one in one of the meetings with Craig. So, I'm just saying, we, now, things have gotten better in that aspect since, you know, for a while. But we have to be the example as well. We have to stop putting books like this in students' hands that label other people if we don't want to be labeled. I just think it's an unwise decision. I think we have to do better in that aspect as well.
I agree. I don't want to belabor anything, but I do want to make a suggestion, to your point, Mrs. Payne, something I've been working on since, over the summer, around dialogue. And I'm not going to present the whole thing here, but I just want to drop the idea. There is an organization called Braver Angels that I've been talking to for many, many months now about working on dialogue together as a board. They've agreed to do a workshop for us. They have representatives from both ends of the political spectrum, they're willing to come in and work with us. I just want to float that out there for, just to stew over, and I can bring it up another time at another meeting when we don't have more items to get through, but just to float it out there for an idea.
Also, Matt Markling, who's a board attorney, did offer to do a session with us, a board session with us, to try to get us to also work together. But he decided to do it for free, so this will also be for free.
Yeah.
So, just an idea.
All right. Under new business this evening, we will have a discussion on vaping prevention, and Mrs. Jesslyn asked that this was added to the agenda, so I'm going to open it up to her.
Sure. When we visited Mr. St. Hiller's class, we, well, a couple sessions of the classes, and the students were doing problem-solving on how there could be changes made to make Minter High School a better place. Three of the groups that I listened to specifically mentioned bathroom safety in terms of the vaping. And so, I thought, well, that's certainly something that, we know it's against the law for students under the age of 18, it's against our building practices to have any kind of smoking on the campus, let alone in the building. And so, I can appreciate why it can be an enforcement nightmare in some cases, certainly a challenge in the best case, because it requires a fair amount of personnel. And I think well-meaning practices can sometimes lead to kids, as adolescents sometimes do, pushing the envelope and maybe getting away with things that aren't healthy for them. And so, I was just wondering, the update on our smoke detectors that will sense it in the air, and how we're handling that, and as I understand it, that's a ticketed infraction, isn't it, from a legal standpoint? If you're a smoker and you're under the age of 18, you can't be smoking cigarettes even.
I don't know if that still stands.
I think it's just purchasing.
I think it's changed a little bit since my days, principal, where we used to-
So, they don't get a ticket?
Ask Officer Skelly to come to the office and write a ticket.
So, but I, you know, I know we had that wonderful buildup for the kids, the quiz show format, to try to emphasize the dangers of vaping. We know that that's an area, it's just the nature of adolescence that makes them a good target, and, you know, if we can, the longer you delay starting smoking of any kind, the more likely you are to not have a habit for life that will harm you in the long run. So, that was why I wanted to bring it up.
And just a couple of things, knowing that this was going to be on the agenda this evening, I reached out to Mr. Crowe and asked if he could give me some updates as to what we're doing here this year, because, again, we talked about beefing up this enforcement as well, similar to what we did with the cell phones, and we've started that process already here this year. So, just as an FYI, if a student is found to be vaping or in possession, the typical consequences are if there's marijuana found in that, it's five days out of school with a referral to the Insight Program, which is the Drug Educational Program through MRT, our Signature Health Counselors. If there's no marijuana found, it's one day out of school suspension. They are monitoring restrooms throughout the day, and they have staff stationed outside a few key areas to help monitor and deter the vaping going on. If a student is reported to be in possession or used to vape, they do search that student. That's where the metal detector wands are being utilized now. And then after each search, the family is contacted, just to make sure that they follow that, follow up with that. I don't have specific numbers with that, Ms. Ioplo, but that's something that I'll, I can look into and see how often those are being used in those situations. Typically, that's when it's being used, if there's cause for a search of a student, they will pull out the metal detector wands when necessary. Couple of other things, we do offer the Insight Program for students found in possession of marijuana as well, not necessarily if it's through a vape, but just the drug itself. And then they also do that with a lot of repeat offenders, so if there's somebody that's caught with a vape over and over and over again, that Insight Program is something that is being referred on a regular basis now. And then, final piece, from the prevention standpoint, to your point, Ms. Jesslyn, is we've partnered with the Lake County General Health District to provide all of our students a vaping education program. It's called Think Fast Interactive, and that will increase the education awareness about the dangers of e-cigarettes. So, multiple pieces that we're attempting to utilize here. To one of the other points, too, we did, in one of our meetings with Chief Gunch and Mr. Filippiac, we asked about, we thought in the past that there may have been a situation where students that were caught vaping or caught with cigarettes, those sorts of things, were being referred to Lake County Juvenile Court. And that used to be the case, that's no longer really happening at this point because of the overwhelming number of cases that they were being presented with. So, there, that really isn't happening at this point in time. But something that, again, we wanted to bring to their attention with the Minter Police Department, so they're aware.
Thanks.
I know we had one, in our Safety Committee, we had talked with, about the sensors, and how part of the problem with the sensors is that whoever's in the bathroom at the time, they all have to be-
Yes.
Basically wanded, and-
Yeah, and it was a big enforcement issue. And that's, I've seen that in other school districts as well, when I was down in Central Ohio that implemented those. And it ultimately ended up being like white noise after a while, oh, the vape sensor went off again. And, you know, trying to track everything down, it's an enforcement issue, it's one of those things. That's such a huge challenge for us right now.
Do you think it would be feasible to kind of intermittently turn them on and off? You know, just like, at times, so no one really knows when they're on or off, but, you know, you know, you're-
The element of surprise.
The element of surprise. I, you know, I just, I think when there's a punishment, you know, it is getting out of control, and looking the other way because it's inconvenient for us doesn't feel right to me, so.
Yeah, and again, I think that's why we've started to try and position some of those school safety individuals outside of some of those restrooms as a deterrent. You know, again, monitoring is the biggest thing, and, you know, obviously, we can't have somebody inside the restroom, but just to be able to track who's going in and out of those facilities and at what point in time those took place, that helps us kind of narrow down and streamline that a little bit more, maybe than we've had in the past, where you just get that report, and then, okay, to Ms. Payne's point, okay, now we're calling 20 people down to do a search on kids that were just in there using the restroom. It's a challenge. But, yeah, that's something that we can talk about a little bit more.
I wonder if, because I do think it is an enforcement issue, and I know we talked about in discipline, you know, having in-school suspensions and being a little tougher on our consequences, and I know that that is also, we don't have, maybe we don't have the resources for that. Do we have parents signing off when their child is given an out-of-school suspension, like, to verify that they did, so that parents are aware? Because I know a lot of parents that don't know that their kids actually vape or are in denial, but is it, do we have something where we can have them sign off? That they're aware that their child is, you know-
Is vaping?
Yeah, that had, or had a vape on them?
Yeah, if they're being suspended out of school, which is five years, or five days if it's got marijuana, one day if it's not, the parents are notified that they're being-
On both.
Yes.
Okay. Not just, I mean, not just we send an email, do we get, like, they sign, okay. And then I was thinking that, you know, this is something that we can, soon, we're going to be appealing to our legislators when they prepare the budget. This could be something that we can come up with a plan of action to get the resources, in-school suspensions, hiring more people, and we can present that to our legislators so they can maybe carve out some money for us. Because the vape, it has devastatingly terrible health effects toward these kids, and so, you know, beyond just the disciplinary issue, this is a health crisis, so.
Mr. Heath, I just have a question. The referral programs, who runs those? I was just curious.
So, the one is, Think Fast Interactive was coming from Lake County-
Right.
-General Health District, and then the other one, the Insight Program, is coming through Signature Health.
Signature Health, okay, thank you.
Okay, if this discussion is closed, we'll have the hearing of the public on any topic.
Our first speaker is Jennifer Hillead. Our next speaker is Lynn Mazika.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak today this evening. As I was driving up here this evening, I was thinking about, this is, this is December already, it's the last meeting of the year, last regular meeting of the year. And I was thinking about some of the things that I've listened to the board discuss over the year and that we've implemented. listened to the board discuss over the year and that we've implemented. And it was kind of a nice list. We have the Cardinal Cafe. We finally came up with a policy on notifying parents about what their books or their children taking from the library. And I know that we're going to continue working towards the silent reading books. Our school scores, state scores have gone up. We got a phenomenal strategic plan done this year. I think we've gone, come a good long way, I hope Mr. Heath agrees with me on this, to getting the buses' situation resolved so that he can start sitting in his office instead of wearing his bus driver hat. And I was also thinking about how fortunate the people in Metta are to have the board, the administrators, and especially the teachers that we have in our system. I think our school system teacher, our, our teachers are dedicated. They love our kids. They want the best for our kids. And they worry when they don't think we support them. And I think we do support them. I can't imagine that anybody on the board doesn't support our teachers. I really don't believe that. But I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, all of you. Thank you for your hard work. Mr. Heath, thank you for your administration's hard work. And if you could pass on my congratulations and best wishes to all your staff and our teachers, I would love that, because they need to know that they're so important to our community. So that's about all I want to say. I do want to wish all of you a happy holidays and a fruitful and happy new year. And thank you for the jobs you do.
Thank you.
David Kern. John Sanford.
Good evening, John Sanford. I'm Parker Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I recently looked at the code of ethics of both the Ohio School Board Association and the Ohio School Board Constitutional Coalition, and found some interesting comparisons. First, the OSBA says, remember that our first greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending the public schools, while the OSBCC says simply encourages students come first. However, Rose and Annie, along with her supporters, have publicly threatened to block any levy if they don't get their way. Apparently now is a part of a next holy crusade, from what we heard earlier this evening. Their attitude reminds me of a toddler holding their breath until they don't get a new toy. Sadly, although equally childish, blocking much-needed levy will be far more destructive than a temper tantrum thrown in the middle of Walmart. Next, this whole issue of trans bathrooms really is a straw dog. There's no record of, that I'm aware of, of any person being assaulted by a genuine trans individual. These people are, our kids are at greater risk going to the president-elect's cabinet than they are going to a year's worth of bathrooms. Third, both groups encourage the use of facts. Facts come from science. Science is not a thing. It's a way of thinking. Like the extremist authors of Project 2025, Annie and Rose prefer to manipulate facts to make an otherwise unsupportable argument. Last month, Annie demonstrated an egregious inability to critically think by reporting a dramatic increase in the number of students transferring to private schools. Those very same numbers from that very same spreadsheet could be used to show that we have cut the number of students attending private schools in half, from 29 per school to 14 per school. Both numbers are meaningless and serve only to distract from the real issues at work. Finally, OSBA admonishes board members to avoid succumbing to special interest groups, while the OSBCC encourages appealing to special interest groups, like the electorate, apparently even when those interests interfere with putting students first, which is what they say it should do. Rose and Annie and their supporters have consistently shown subservience to the Heritage Foundation, authors of Project 2025. Their rhetoric regarding trans students is in lockstep with Project 2025. They recently, they certainly are not original in their efforts, merely the local mouthpieces of a national effort to take us back to a time when only privileged misogynistic cisgender whites were entitled to an education. So Madam President, you have my congratulations. You've completed a year leading two conflicted boards, one comprised of people working with integrity, following the ethics of an OSBA-affiliated group, and the other trying to pathetically pander to special interest groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some comments I'd like to make in reference to what was just said, because a lot of it was egregious and completely absurd. But in reference to the private education numbers that I did provide last month, the 914 students is true. That's, it's not false. We have 914 students that are now going to private schools. The difference in the calculation from 36 was also not my fault, because I asked for this information and was given incorrect information, not including any of the schools outside of Lake County. So with that information in there, I have updated my graph as well. And I can tell you that from 2018, actually 2019 to 2020, private schooling has increased by 26%. Homeschooling actually has increased by 62%. Our enrollment has gone down by 12%. Just wanted to give some, some facts. That's all.
No.
You're not allowed.
I'm sorry.
Last speaker is David Lyman.
Board President Cook, board members, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade. For those of you who may not be familiar with it, restorative justice is a process that aims, through conferences, dialogue, and communication, to repair harm between victims, offenders, and the school community. It focuses on healing rather than punishment, where offenders accept responsibility for their misbehavior, and the victim agrees to participate in the process. A facilitator guides the process and helps the victim and offender discuss what happened and options. The victim can explain the impact of the misbehavior, and the offender can take responsibility and make amends and agree on actions to address the harm. Education organizations like the National Education Association have endorsed this approach over the exclusionary zero-tolerance approach. An article published in NEA Today, November 8, 2023, highlighted a study done by the University of Chicago Education Lab suggesting that this approach is working well. The report, and I quote, "Schools that implemented restorative justice practices saw a staggering 35% reduction in student arrests in school and an 18% decrease in out-of-school suspensions." In addition, perceptions of school climate improved, along with peer classroom behavior and feeling that they belong at school and that it was a safe place to be. Decades of research have shown the damaging effects of the zero-tolerance punitive approach. Another article in that same publication reports on a 2021 study of the New York City Public Schools by the American Institute for Research that found, and I quote, "Disciplining students through suspensions and expulsion did not reduce future misbehavior for the disciplined students or their peers. It also did not generate an improved academic achievement or perceptions of positive school climate." Furthermore, they found that the more severe the punishment, the greater its negative effects were on a student's future academic performance, attendance, and behavior. These are just two studies, among many, that show that restorative justice approach to have significant advantages over the punitive approach. I support the use of restorative justice when dealing with disciplinary issues concerning our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Ms. Cook, I had one more issue, and when you, you moved on, I, I didn't speak up, but I'm gonna, I have one more, new business, if I can do that really quick. I had a parent call me after last, last meeting about her concern for her child. And I think everybody saw another, in the same day, went viral about one of our clubs in our middle schools. And she had spoke, I spoke with her for a while. And she had some valid concerns. And this was concerning the Pride Club flyer that said, no parental notice. We did get some information since then on it. And I don't know if maybe the flyer was a little bit misleading, but nevertheless, it went, a lot of people saw it and had some concerns. So this parent's concern was that her, for two, two things. One, her 11-year-old was, you know, was attending something, and she didn't know where her child was. You know, she stayed, her child is staying after school, but she doesn't know what she's doing. So that was a concern. But further, she, she said, you know, "My child clearly, by attending this club, had some curiosities, and she would have appreciated a heads-up that that her child was attending so that she could support her child." So I think it makes sense. In looking into this, we don't have any parental approval for any of our clubs, from what I understand. And I think that's something we should consider, just so that, I mean, you know, I know if they're on any extracurricular activity, it's on infinite campus and it states that they're, that they're participating. And that doesn't necessarily mean they're there every one. But I think this might be something that we need to implement, because, you know, if a parent, these, you know, sixth graders are 11-years-old, and if a parent has to pick up their child up early from an, you know, an after-school activity, that is that secretary going to know where in the building their child is, what they're doing, if there's an emergency? I just think that it might be better for peace of mind that we have sign up on every club, just so parents are aware of what their children's interests are. She, the, the parent had said, you know, "My child also attended the Bible Club." And she's like, "I had no idea." And that's okay, but I, I would have liked to have known that. So that's just something I think that we should consider. I know a lot of parents were concerned about that, and that makes sense. And then also, I know this, this might be, this is something, a topic that has been concerning to a lot of parents, but the fact that on these flyers, they also have flags and flags all over, that concerns a lot of people. I know our refugee club is, was told they can't put a book on their flyer, their advertisements that they put around the building, because someone might assume that that's a Bible, and we can't do that. So I feel that that's a little unfair. So that might be a topic that we need to discuss in regulating and making sure that it's fair for all of our clubs.
Sorry, just to be clear, you're referring to the pride flag?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I think that, as Rose stated, that was another thing that did go viral. And I think it was just a really poor choice of language to be putting on a flyer that, hey, we don't have to tell your parents that you're here. Like, that's how it came across. It just didn't come across well. But I think that all clubs, to your point, you know, Rose, I think all clubs should have parental authorization. When I went to Memorial, I had vocal lessons after school, and I had to get vocal lessons from Mr. Coleman, who was phenomenal, by the way. But I had to get, you know, authorization then. And I think that that's just, you know, we, we want our parents to know where their kids are at all times when they're in our care. So I don't see any issue with just doing it for all clubs. That way, that's not one that's singled out. I think it should just be all clubs, should have parental signature.
Are we comfortable with exploring that, seeing what other districts might do? Or, you know, is there, I can't think of a reason why to not do this. But I would like to get some input from maybe administrators to see why it hasn't been done, or has it ever been an issue before? Or, you know, just kind of pros and cons before we just jump into it. I think, I think that it's valid point. But I would just like to gather some information about, has it ever been done and was there an issue? Or is, you know, just that information?
Yeah, I'll gather some information and provide it here as soon as we can.
I'd be open to that, for sure.
Another concern on that club was, what, do we have guidelines for the, whatever teacher's running the club? If, if conversation turns inappropriate, because that has happened, and this parent did report that that, there were some conversations. So do we have?
Those conversations did not happen inside the club, for the record.
I'm sorry?
Those conversations did not occur inside the club.
So the parents didn't, shouldn't believe their child?
No. But what we were told is that those conversations did not occur inside the club.
That's not what the parent is reporting. So I'm asking if we have any kind of way to make sure that there's protocol, just like there's a, teachers have, have to report if, if, if they hear somebody, a student talk about something else.
I would imagine it would be the same for any situation, if a teacher is encountering that at any time during the school hours, that they have a process.
Do we have that same, do we have, what protocol do we have?
Oh, Mr. Heath, can you speak to, to that? I mean, do they refer them to counseling? Do they stop? Do they talk to their supervisor?
If there's conversations taking place in the, in the club?
At any time, really.
So like students?
To students?
Or with the, asking the, the teacher who is running the club? That, that was what I was told. So I said, I have no idea. I'm sure that the teacher would, would cut that off and not, you know, this is not my conversation. But if we're going to have a club where it's there to talk about feelings, because the flyer does say, come, what was the exact words? Like, discuss, relax, and have, you know, share. And so it could turn into something, do we have a way to, like, to protect, to make sure that we keep everything, you know? And it may be that the child is initiating that conversation. I'm not accusing anybody of, the adult of doing that. But is there, is there a line where it's, okay, we're only going to talk about these topics and that's it?
And I think too, to your point, Rose, we do have a policy that's in alignment with the law. There's a revised code at the bottom of it, about sex behaviors and attitudes in reference to surveys. And we're not allowed to ask students those questions referencing sex, behavior, and attitudes, like anything around there. And so I would assume that this, now it's outside of our school hours, but still within our school, taught by a teacher, if topics like that do come up. I mean, that's even more reason to have a parental signature on a form, because in, if during school hours, a child did try to approach, or, you know, a teacher was like, hey, let's talk about this, or if the child approached them, I believe we have to, we have to follow that policy. And there would have to be parental signature before having those conversations or surveying the kid and asking him questions about sex behaviors and attitudes.
I, I just want to clarify that we have heard that this teacher did nothing wrong.
No, I'm not accusing.
I mean, I, so we, we need to understand that this, this club is a board-approved, unanimously board-approved club. We did not have any concerns about the club or the content of the club. The fact that a student stayed after school and didn't tell their parents where they were is an issue that maybe we can do with permission slips or sign-ups. I, I understand that. But the content of the club and now questioning if the licensed teacher with, you know, I mean, the, these are.
I'm not questioning the teacher. I'm asking for protection for parents and for the teacher. Because the teacher did get dragged, this name got dragged all through social media. It's protecting him. So you're, you're jumping to a conclusion that I'm attacking the teacher, because I'm not.
I guess as, as a teacher myself, who has run clubs, you know, you're expected to act professionally, just like you are in the classroom.
That's my point.
So I don't, I don't, we don't need a policy that you have to ask, act professional, and you have to follow policies. That's the way it is.
Well, their license requires it.
Yeah. I mean, that, right, your license requires it.
Whether it's during school hours or an after-school club, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Special Code of Conduct.
Does that cover any kind of discussions then in regards to sexuality, anything like that?
It covers all of our policy.
But I mean, specifically as a teacher, like, does that cover this, any teacher from having conversations with children about sexuality? Or does that not necessarily cover it?
It would be hard to explain, you're talking about sexuality, if it's not related to the content or curriculum that you're supposed to be teaching or the club or activity.
Well, so the club is based, I mean, it's a pride club, right? So that there could be discussions. I don't, I don't know very much about. So, that there could be discussions, I don't, I don't know very much about the club, to be dead honest with you guys. I I don't know very many people that go to it. So, I would assume if it's a pride club, it's, there's, there could be a potential of discussion around sexuality, because that's, I mean, part of the pride club, pride of pride is discussing sexuality, or at least having that in common with somebody else. So, is that something that isn't, like, teachers are not allowed to talk about then? Because to Rose's point, then it wouldn't be an issue.
I would have to know the specific content before I could answer that question. I mean, I I think that there would be things that you would have to limit. You wouldn't go into details about, like, sexual acts, is that what you're talking about?
No, just sexuality. Like, if if there was a child that was like, you know, I think I might be attracted to the same sex, or I think I might be, I feel uncomfortable in my skin, I might, you know, I feel more prone to be in the opposite sex, or whatever. If those kind of things occur, then is that something the teacher is allowed? Like, you're a teacher, so you said, if a, if a student approached you with those kind of questions, would you answer them without notifying their parent? Like, is that something, or does that step outside of that line that you said is drawn?
I guess I'm not sure what you would say as an answer. You would say something like, you know, "Thank you for sharing."
Okay, so you're you're not supposed to, like, actually address?
I wouldn't dig into it, and I wouldn't be, you know, going, going into details. It just is the same as if a student came up to me and said, you know, "I like Jimmy." You know, "Susie said I like Jimmy." Like, I wouldn't be, like, going on about, "How are you guys going to go out?" You know, I would just go, "Thanks, okay, cool." So, I guess it, yeah.
From what, I mean, from what we learned, too, and I won't, I guess, I don't want to divulge much information, other than to say, we did all receive information about what happens at pride clubs, uh, from one of our administrators. And it was very clear that it was a place to socialize and hang out. And, um, it doesn't mean that any of those attendees identify one way or the other. It's, it was really just, it is a place for kids to come and hang out. I know for working parents like myself, those after-school clubs have been lifesavers. For for those of us who have to rush home to get, to get the kids picked up, just having a safe place for them to hang out after class ends, um, until, what, about 4:30, maybe 5:00, the latest, has been incredibly helpful. I'm, you know, totally open to talking about sign-ups if if that's what we're interested in, making sure we're communicating all of the clubs appropriately. I think that was something, Mr. Heath, you discussed with one of the parents. But, yeah, I mean, I, I, I want to make it clear that nothing nefarious is going on in any of these after-school clubs, whether it's pride club, Bible club, book club, um, I think there, there's art club, I mean, there are a lot of clubs. And truly, they are, my, my children, my one, well, one of my children, went to many of those clubs. And, um, again, it was a place to kind of have a snack, talk to friends, and hang out until mom got to school to pick you up, so. Do you, the other part of Rose's, um, questions or statements were about the flag. I do think that's a topic, you know, for us definitely to to look into in the future, because I have had also complaints, and I know we have had complaints on those particular flags. So, I do think that would be a topic we should talk about in the future.
Okay. Any, anything else? All right, since we do not have an executive session after the meeting, after this portion of the meeting, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second. Please hold the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Aplo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Be adjourned at 10:25 PM.